That should be 3J.
Okay, good evening, everyone. This is a regular meeting of the Jersey City Municipal Council. Today is Wednesday, September 23rd. Excuse me, Tuesday, September 23rd in the year 2014. It's 6:00 PM. We had a 6:00 PM scheduled start. Actual time is 6:04 PM. President, roll call. Councilperson Kudjuski.
Yes.
Ramchow.
Yes.
Bajano.
Yes.
Yun.
Yes.
Osborne.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Rivera.
Here.
Waterman.
Yeah.
Council President.
Here.
Would everyone kindly rise to observe a moment of silence? The members of the Department of Commerce, the Department of Defense, the President Peter Brinkley, and Eleanor Kennedy, mother of Eleanor Kennedy.
Annette Ripka.
Very much remain standing for a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in relation to the God invisible with our freedom of justice for all. Thank you very much. On behalf of the Council President and members of the council, in accordance with the New Jersey Public Laws of 1975, Chapter 231, the Open Public Meetings Act, better known as the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting was provided by mail under fax to the Jersey City Reporter, the Jersey Journal. Additionally, the annual notice was posted on the bulletin board of the First floor City Hall and filed in the office of the city clerk on Wednesday, November 27, 2013, indicating the schedule of meetings and caucuses of the Jersey City Municipal Council for the calendar year 2014. In addition, at the time of its preparation, the agenda of this meeting was similarly disseminated on Thursday, September 18, 2014, at 4:00 PM to the mayor, council business administrator, and the local newspapers. I can certify to our total compliance with the Sunshine Law. Council members, if I could get a motion to do some housekeeping, that's to add 3J, City Ordinance 14-129, and Resolutions 10Y through 10Z1 to the agenda.
Motion.
By Councilperson Rivera.
Second.
By Council President. Lavaro. On the motion, Councilperson Kudjuski.
Aye.
Ramchow.
Aye.
Bajano. Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
And Council President.
Aye.
Give me one second, council members. Okay, council members, members of the public, we have first reading ordinances.
Robert, before we proceed, I think that Councilman Kudjuski wants to make a motion.
I want to make a motion to defer to Resolution 10Z1.
We have a motion to defer to 10Z1 by Councilperson Kudjuski, seconded by Councilperson Coleman.
Let me just add it to the...
10Z1 is a resolution recognizing Kayla Morales during Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Jersey City. To defer, Councilperson Kudjuski.
Aye.
Ramchow.
Aye.
Bajano.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye.
All right, we are deferring.
If we could have Kayla Morales and her family and friends approach the podium, and then Councilman Kudjuski, would you like to read the resolution into the record?
One? Yeah, it's on now. This resolution is about two things. It's about the Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and it's also about a young lady named Kayla Morales. About two or three years ago, I recall being told by my wife, who works in School 20, that there was a lemonade stand outside the school, and that I had to go over there to buy some lemonade. And I said, "Okay, I'll go over and buy some lemonade." And she said, "No, you don't understand. You've got to buy," with a capital B, "some lemonade. It's for a very important cause." So, for the last few years, I've been going there, and I noticed that Kayla has set up with her mom, Tammy, selling lemonade. And it's sort of, if you can think back in time, everybody knows about Alex's Lemonade Stand, about the little girl who passed away in the year, I think she passed away in 2004, I think it was. But around 2000, she established her stand, Alexandria Scott, because she was suffering from cancer. So, she was trying to raise money so that she could help out, give money to the doctors to help out other young children who were suffering likewise from cancer. And she created Alex's Lemonade Stand. So, Kayla sort of followed in her footsteps, decided she was going to do some of the very same thing to help out other people who were suffering from childhood cancer. So, this resolution is recognizing Kayla Morales during Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Jersey City. And whereas cancer is the leading cause of disease-related death for children, resulting in a higher mortality rate than the cause by asthma, cystic fibrosis, diabetes, and pediatric AIDS combined, the American Cancer Society estimates that in 2014, an estimated 15,780 new cases of cancer will be diagnosed, and 1,960 deaths in cancer will occur among children and adolescents aged birth to 19 years old. And whereas, unlike many types of cancer acquired in adulthood, childhood cancers tend to be more aggressive than common cancers affecting adults, and are more likely unrelated to lifestyle, thus affording fewer safe treatment options. And whereas funding for research and treatment is severely lacking, with less than 5% of the federal government's total funding for cancer research dedicated to childhood cancers, despite rising pediatric cancer rates in the past few decades, funding has steadily decreased since 2003. And whereas, thanks to better treatment options and more and more children partaking in promising clinical trials, survival rates for children with cancer have greatly improved. Accordingly, the National Cancer Institute have, quote, "The incidence of invasive cancer in children have increased slightly over the past 30 years. Mortality rates have declined by more than 50% for many of the childhood cancers, and the combined five-year survival rate for all childhood cancers have improved from less than 50% before the 1970s to 80% today." So, whereas increased public awareness of this major public health problem is a crucial step towards finding solutions, and Childhood Cancer Awareness Month is an important nationwide tool for raising awareness among governmental officials and the public about the nature and scope of this problem. And whereas, Kayla Morales, nicknamed Buttercup, is nine years old and is gifted and talented Hope Class at PS 20 School in Jersey City. Her hobbies include community service, such as Teens for Jeans fundraisers, where she collected nearly 420 pairs of jeans in February for homeless children and teens. And whereas, in honor of her cousin, Antoinette Nelly, who was battling cancer, Kayla, every June, created a lemonade stand in front of Toys R Us on Route 440 during Lemonade Days, a youth entrepreneurial program powered by Google. All proceeds are donated to children with cancer. Though her cousin lost the battle, Kayla continues to honor her and create awareness for children with cancer. Now, therefore, it would be resolved that Municipal Council of Jersey, the City of Jersey City, does hereby proclaim the month of September each year as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Jersey City, and pays tribute to the families, friends, professionals, and communities who lend their strength to children fighting pediatric cancer, commends their courage, and joins in their commitment, continue to move forward towards new cures, healthier outcomes, and a brighter future for all our youth. And let's give a big hand, applause. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Here's a copy of the resolution. You. I'm going to take a picture.
Is it in the note?
Yeah. It's going to fall, just like that.
Over here.
We've got to get going up there.
Thank you very much, Kayla. We're still going to take the votes, and then Kayla will be able to say a few words.
10Z1, Councilperson Kudjuski.
Aye.
Ramchow.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye. We've got to get going up there.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Kayla. There you go.
We're still going to take the votes, and then Kayla will be able to say a few words.
10Z1, Councilperson Kudjuski.
Aye.
Ramchow.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Yun. Osborne.
Kayla, I just want to say you are a special girl with a wonderful heart. But there's a lot of kids with good hearts. What really, really impresses me is that you're a woman of action already at this age, and I want you to do one thing for me, okay? Just one thing. Stay that way. Always stay a woman of action, okay? Okay, aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
I want to say also, Kayla, you can be and do anything you want to do, and the way you've started out, I know I'm going to see you somewhere when I go to heaven. I'm going to be looking down at the Secretary of State or something like that. Congratulations, and keep on doing what you're doing, and I vote aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Kayla, you're going to be a true role model. I say aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Kayla, there's a saying that says, "The gift of giving is when you make people feel special." And you have a gift of making people feel special. Keep that gift within you and continue to share that, because that's really what life is all about, making others feel special. God bless you, and I say aye.
Council President.
Kayla, you, as everyone has said, very, very special. I had the great fortune of buying a little bit of lemonade at the front of Toys R Us on Route 440. Cami, you've raised a great daughter, and you're just a beautiful child. So, thank you for inspiring all of us. I vote aye.
Resolution 10Z1 is unanimously adopted. Nine, zero. Approved nine, zero.
Kayla, do you want to say something?
Well, I'll get us started reading the titles of the first readings into the record. 3A, City Ordinance 14-120, an ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City adopting amendments to the Tidewater Basin redevelopment plan to create a mixed-use district. If it looks familiar to you out there in the audience, it's because we have an ordinance of the same title on as a second reading, which we expect to table after this is introduced without a public hearing. So, if you're here for a public hearing on that, it'll be two weeks from tomorrow on October 8. 3B, City Ordinance 14-121, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a temporary easement and license agreement on city-owned property located at 13 Linden Avenue, New Jersey City, New Jersey, to accommodate two solar renewable energy installations in connection with a Solar Power Energy Services Agreement entered into by and among the City of Jersey City, the Hudson County Improvement Authority, and the Hudson Energy Solar Corporation. 3C, City Ordinance 14-122, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a grant and conservation -- a grant and a conservation restriction easement agreement.
For which one?
Grant of conservation agreement.
Ask Joanne when you vote.
Conservation restriction easement agreement for public access to the waterfront among the City of Jersey City and Liberty Harbor Holding LLC as grantors, LHN owner, Urban Renewal LLC as the developer, and the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection as grantee. 3D, City Ordinance 14-123, is an ordinance authorizing the transfer of Block 30305, Lot 6, to the New Jersey Turnpike Authority. 3A is City Ordinance 14-124, an ordinance supplementing Chapter A 351, executive orders and ordinances of the Jersey City Code, creating the title of maintenance worker two grounds. 3F is City Ordinance 14-125, an ordinance amending one, Chapter 175, food handling establishments, Article 3, food establishments, to create standards for farmers' markets; two, Chapter 3, administration of government; and Article 9, Department of Public Works, Section 71, Division of Park Maintenance, to amend the approval process for farmers' markets seeking permission to operate in city parks; and three, Chapter 239, Parks, Section 15, hours of operation, permits farmers' markets to create standards for farmers' markets operating in city parks. 3G, City Ordinance 14-126, an ordinance supplementing Chapter 332, vehicles and traffic, Article 2, traffic regulations, Section 332-8, parking prohibited, prohibited right turns on red signal of the Jersey City Traffic Code, amending the days and hours that right turn on red signal is prohibited at Canal Street and Grand Street, Grand Street and Mamet Street, Grand Street and Douglas and Arthur Skinner Memorial Drive, formerly known as Jersey Avenue, Grand Street and Barrow Street, Grand Street and Marin Boulevard, and Grand Street and Washington Street, to 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM. Cool days, all approaches. H, City Ordinance 14-127, an ordinance supplementing Chapter 332, vehicles and traffic, Article 2, traffic regulations, amending Section 332-5, one-way streets of the Jersey City Code, repealing the one-way south on Cole Street from 10th Street to 12th Street. 3I, 14-128, an ordinance to consent to one, convey ownership of a project currently held solely by Grand LHN One Urban Renewal LLC, to include both KRE, Eighteen Park Urban Renewal LLC and Eighteen Park Acquisition Urban Renewal LLC, and result in joint and several ownership of the project by all three entities, and two, assumption by all three entities of the financial agreement and the long-term tax exemption. 3J, City Ordinance 14-129, an ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City replacing the Danforth Avenue Transit Village redevelopment plan with a new Danforth Industrial Park redevelopment plan. Council members 3A through 3J, Councilperson Kudjuski.
Aye.
Ramchow.
I, but I'm 3F. I have some concerns, so I'm going to vote aye for introduction for now.
Councilperson Bajano.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye for introduction.
Coleman.
Aye for introduction.
Rivera.
Aye for introduction.
Waterman.
Aye for introduction.
Lavaro.
Yeah, just on 3F, as Councilman Ramchow expressed, we discussed at the caucus last night, and there was a lot of discussion about this particular ordinance, which establishes certain rules around farmers' markets. And we're going to, I expressed at least, that would urge everybody to introduce this, and then on second reading, look to table it. But we would like to have public comments. And so, people who have vested interest in the farmers' market or ancillary to the farmers' market, to come to that meeting and express your public comments, so that we can get that on the record, and then the council can also make amendments to this ordinance that will fit all the needs of the people of Jersey City. With that, I'll vote aye for introduction on all.
Okay, 3A through 3J introduced unanimously, nine, zero. Now, council members, this is the public hearing on the McGinley Square Special Improvement District Budget and Assessment Roll. Is there anyone who received a special mailing from my office indicating their assessment as constituent members of the McGinley Square Special Improvement District Roll? Anyone wishing to be heard? Hearing none? Could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Wait, who made the motion?
Councilman Ramchow.
Seconded by Councilman Rivera. And this is to close the public hearing on the McGinley Square SID Budget and Assessment On the motion, Councilperson Kudjuski.
Aye.
Ramchow.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye.
We have a nine, zero vote to close the public hearing. Council members, we'll get to those resolutions later on in the consent agenda. Thank you, Christine. Now, council members, my favorite time of year, I know it's yours. It's the public hearing on the amendment to the calendar year 2014 municipal budget. There are copies of the amendment out on the rail for anyone to have and use, because the public hearing tonight on the budget amendment is confined to that document. So, this is a public hearing on the amendment to the calendar year 2014 municipal budget. So, if you have a movie you want to go see while I read this into the record, please feel free to do so. This is a resolution to amend the calendar year 2014 municipal budget, whereas the calendar year 2014 municipal budget of the City of Jersey City was introduced and approved on March 12, 2014. And whereas it is desired to amend the said budget prior to adoption, the council having done that at their last meeting on September 10, now therefore be it resolved by the municipal council, by a majority of the full membership, that the following amendments to the approved calendar year 2014 municipal budget be made. General revenues surplus anticipated with prior consent of director from $16,250 to $13,000. Total surplus anticipated from $16,416,000 to $16,413,000. Section A, local revenues, alcoholic beverage licenses from $436,000 to $511,636. Cable TV franchise fees from $2158,058 to $2298,678. Hack and Sack Meadowlands adjustment from $1,182,212 to $1,155,705. Local school aid from $2,500,000 to $2,426,182. Pack, taxi cab, and omnibus licenses from $10973 to $152,804. Municipal court fines from $11,41,590 to $10,400,000. Passaic Valley Sewerage Commission incentive from $0 to $129,963. Section A, local revenues, from $37,319,827 to $36,975,962. Section 2, state aid without offsetting appropriations, building aid allowances for school aid from $5,475,816 to $4,709,375. Total Section B, state aid without offsetting appropriations, from $69,336,338 to $68,569,897. Uniform construction code fees from $5,675,000 to $5,756,541. Section F, public and private revenues offset with appropriations. Section G, special revenue items, recycling tonnage from $0 to $122,179. JTPA from $0 to $4,187,710. FEMA SAFER grant from $0 to $6,868,000. Town hall meeting from $0 to $500. Hops and shops from $0 to $3,439. Stuyvesant statue restoration from $0 to $4,939. Second chance maintenance program from $0 to $310,000. Community services block grant from $0 to $877,334. Clean Communities Forestry from $0 to $3,000. Super Bowl crackdown from $0 to $4,000. Summer Works Initiative from $0 to $190,000. Municipal Drug Alliance from $87,453 to $330,507. Target grant from $0 to $500. Jersey City Soccer Association from $0 to $5,030. Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant from $0 to $198,505. Porsche Grant from $0 to $22,000. Clean Communities Program from $0 to $328,191. Various Street Resurfacing from $0 to $1,073,590. PetSmart Charities from $99,900, remaining the same at $99,900. Section Total F, public and private revenues offset with appropriations, from $1,794,466 Special, excuse me, Section G, special revenue items, payments in lieu of taxes, pilots, Polar Logistics East from $36,079 to $98,370. 28 Kennedy Boulevard LLC from $72,561 to $232,275. Hotel at Newport Urban Renewal LLC, the Western, from $1,027,700 to $875,861. Tower of America from $0 to $187,064. 90 Hudson Urban Renewal from $1,538,106 to $2,000,000. 70 Hudson Street from $1,941,623 to $1,405,372. Marbella Tower Urban Renewal Associates from $1,515,809 to $1,750,000. Newport Hotel One Urban Renewal from $249,487 to $364,537. Cave and Point Urban Renewal from $397,521 to $203,94. Port Authority Global Terminal from $2,720,060 to $1,360,30. Let's Celebrate from $46,827 to $71,016. Fairmount Hotel from $42,545 to $94,642. Hut 30 Hudson Street from $4,741,859 to $4,580,000. Mercury Urban Renewal from $205,000 to $297,280. Hudson Point Apartments from $777,424 to $1,227,22. BR Orpheum from $0 to $297,280. Port Liberté Two from $4,000,000 to $3,935,999. Total of pilots from $112,642,195 to $112,306,736. to $112,306,736. Miscellaneous Revenue, Section G, Special Revenue Items Anticipated With Prior Consent Of Director, Taxi Cab Medallion Auction from $250,000 to $184,000. Abatement Transfer Fee From $0 to $3,100,000. Sale of municipal property, land sales from $8,250,000 to $5,38,500. Jersey City Parking Authority Debt Service Payment from $0 to $341,372. Babs Federal Credit From $1,539,543. RZEDB Federal Credit From $0 to $177,297. Total Section G, Special Revenue Items Anticipated With Prior Consent Of Director Summary Of Revenues Surplus Anticipated With Consent With Prior Consent Of Director From $16,250 to $13,000. Miscellaneous Revenues Total Section A, Local Revenues From $37,319,827 to $36,975,962. Total Section B, State Aid Without Offsetting Appropriations to $68,569,897. Total Section C, Dedicated Uniform Construction With Appropriation From $5,675,000 to $5,756,541. Total Section F, Special Items, Public and Private Revenues From $1,794,466 to $16,236,718. Total Section G, Special Items, Other Special Items From $140,973,495 to $142,458,748. Miscellaneous Revenues From $255,99,126 to $269,997,866. Receipt From Delinquent Taxes From $725,000 to $851,494. Subtotal Of General Revenues From $272,240,376 Local Tax Including Reserve For Uncollected Taxes From $217,474,339 Addition To Local School District Tax From $5,7,991 to $5,774,432. Total Amount To Be Raised By Taxes Total General Revenues From $500,912,891 General Appropriations Operations Within Caps Purchasing Purchasing Salaries And Wages From $644,77 to $654,77. Total Of Purchasing From $644,77 to $654,77. Communications Communication Salaries And Wages From $416,46 to $476,46. Total Communications to $476,46. Municipal Court Municipal Court Salaries And Wages From $3,715,946 to $3,415,946. Total Municipal Court From $3,715,946 to $3,415,946. Police Salaries And Wages From $98,805,578 to $100,820,578. Police Other Expenses From $3,127,922 to $3,412,922. Total Of Police From $98,805,578 to $100,820,578. Public Safety Director's Office Public Safety Director's Office Salaries And Wages From $1,192,77 to $1,42,077. Total Public Safety Director's Office From $1,192,77 to $1,42,077. City Clerk City Clerk Salaries And Wages From $843,538 to $858,538. Total City Clerk From $843,538 to $858,538. Mayor's Office Mayor's Office Salaries And Wages From $1,301,750 to $1,201,750. Mayor's Office Other Expenses From $30,500 to $40,500. Total Mayor's Office From $1,332,250 to $1,242,250. Architecture and Engineering Department Of Public Works Architecture And Engineering Salaries And Wages From $2,185,279 Architecture And Engineering Other Expenses From $1,738,500 to $51,935. Total Architecture And Engineering From $2,185,279 to $1,376,900. Architecture And Engineering Under Administration Architecture And Engineering Salaries And Wages From $0 to $700,000. Architecture And Engineering Other Expenses From $0 to $1,686,565. Total Architecture And Engineering From $0 to $2,386,565. Health And Human Services Director's Office Other Expenses From $96,205 to $133,517. Park Maintenance Park Maintenance Salaries And Wages From $2,462,554 to $2,562,554. Total Park Maintenance From $2,462,554 to $2,562,554. Automotive Services Automotive Services Salaries And Wages From $1,018,29 to $1,143,29. Total Automotive Services From $1,018,29 to $1,143,29. Division Of Health Division Of Health Salaries And Wages From $2,393,624 to $2,243,624. Division Of Health Other Expenses From $631,640 to $651,640. Total Division Of Health From $2,393,624 to $2,243,624. Department Of Recreation Department Of Recreation Salaries And Wages From $2,899,000 to $3,178,963. Total Department Of Administration, excuse me, Department Of Recreation From $2,899,000 to $3,178,963. Management And Budget Management And Budget Salaries And Wages From $414,878 to $440,376. Total Management And Budget From $414,878 to $440,376. Residents Response Center Residents Response Center Salaries And Wages to $1,256,663. Total Residents Response Center From $1,356,663 Information Technology Information Technology Salaries And Wages From $912,504 to $952,504. Total Information Technology From $912,504 to $952,504. Collections Collection Salaries And Wages From $1,027,78 to $895,778. Total Collections From $1,027,78 to $895,778. Department Of Public Works Director's Office Salaries And Wages From $736,486 to $916,486. Director's Office Other Expenses From $117,500 to $197,500. Total Department Of Public Works From $853,986 to $1,113,986. Construction Code Official Construction Code Official Salaries And Wages From $2,4448 to $1,854,448. Total Construction Code Official From $2,448 to $1,854,448. Human Resources Human Resources Salaries And Wages From $1,094,208 to $508,267. Human Resources Other Expenses From $236,800 to $66,935. Total Department Of Human Resources From $1,331,800 to $575,202. Human Resources Director's Office Human Resources Director's Office Salaries And Wages From $0 to $120,000. Human Resources Director's Office Other Expenses From $0 to $153,45. Total Human Resources Director's Office From $0 to $273,45. Workforce Management Workforce Management Salaries And Wages From $0 to $175,000. Workforce Management Other Expenses From $0 to $7,100. Total Workforce Management From $0 to $182,100. Health Benefits From $0 to $70,000. Health Benefits Other Expenses From $0 to $1,500. Total Health Benefits From $0 to $71,500. Pension Pension Salaries And Wages From $0 to $135,000. Pension Other Expenses From $0 to $3,000. Total Pension From $0 to $138,000. Payroll Payroll Salaries And Wages From $0 to $245,000. Payroll Other Expenses From $0 to $5,220. Total Payroll $2,000 From $0 to $250,220. Employee Group Health Insurance From $71,700, excuse me, $71,706,000 to $74,181,488. Salary Adjust Professional Affiliations From $20,000 to $21,000. Salary Adjustments From $300,000 to $800,000. Total Operations Within Caps From $355,021,512 Total Operations Including Contingent Within Caps Detail Salaries And Wages From $207,72,447 to $206,898,588. Salaries And Wages Other Expenses Including Contingent From $147,949,65 Deferred Charges And Statutory Expenditures Within Caps Deferred Charges Prior Year Bills From $1,0925 to $58,172. Subtotal Deferred Charges From $1,925 to $58,172. Accumulated Absences From $2,000,000 to $0,000. Statutory Expenditures Police Fire Retirement System From $36,134,966 to $33,941,159. Public Employees Retirement System From $2,358,280 to $2,157,151. Subtotal Of Statutory Expenditures From $52,332,386 to $49,937,450. Total Deferred Charges And Statutory Expenditures Within Caps to $49,983,291. Total General Appropriations Within Caps From $407,355,823 to $408,252,75. Operations Excluded From Caps Free Public Library From $8,050,000 to $8,750,000. Public And Private Programs Offset By Revenues Excluding From The Caps Recycling Tonnage From $0 to $122,179,000. JTPA From $0 to $4,187,710. The FEMA SAFER Grant From $0 to $6,868,000. Town Hall Meeting From $0 to $500. Cops And Shops From $0 to $3,439. Stuyvesant Statue Restoration From $0 to $4,939. Second Chance Maintenance Programming From $0 to $310,000. Community Services Block Grant From $0 to $877,334. Clean Communities Forestry From $0 to $6,000. Super Bowl Crackdown From $0 to $4,000. Summer Works Initiative From $0 to $190,000. Municipal Drug Alliance From $116,604 to $413,134. Target Grant From $0 to $500. Jersey City Soccer Association From $0 to $5,030. Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant From $0 to $198,505. The Porsche Grant From $0 to $22,000. And we're on the last page. Clean Communities Program From $0 to $328,191. Various Streets Resurfacing From $0 to $1,073,590. Total Public And Private Programs From $2,172,39 to $16,670,677. Total Operations Excluded From Caps From $11,300,722 Other Expenses From $11,300,722 to $27,724,360. Total General Appropriations Excluded From Caps From $81,534,890 to $96,58,528. Local School District Purposes Excluded From Tax Local School District Purposes Excluded From Tax, From Caps, Excuse Me, From Ten Million Four Hundred Eighty-Three Thousand Eight Hundred Seven Dollars. It Remains The Same At Ten Million Four Hundred Eighty-Three Thousand Eight Hundred Seven Dollars. Total General Appropriations Excluded From Caps From Ninety-Two Million Eighteen Thousand Six Hundred Ninety-Seven Dollars To One Hundred Six Million Five Hundred Forty-Two Thousand Three Hundred Thirty-Five Dollars. Subtotal Of General Appropriations That's H one N zero or an O, Excuse Me, From Four Hundred Ninety-Nine Million Three Hundred Seventy-Four Thousand Five Hundred Twenty Dollars To Five Hundred Fourteen Million Seven Hundred Ninety-Four Thousand Two Hundred Nineteen Dollars. Reserve For Uncollected Taxes From One Million Five Hundred Thirty-Eight Thousand Three Hundred Seventy-One Dollars To One Million Eight Hundred Forty-Six Thousand Seven Hundred Thirty-Seven Dollars. Total General Appropriations From Five Hundred Million Nine Hundred Twelve Thousand Eight Hundred Ninety-One Dollars To Five Hundred Sixteen Million Six Hundred Forty-One Thousand One Hundred Forty-Six Dollars And Eighty-Six Cents. Summary Of Appropriations Operations Within Caps Including Contingent From Three Hundred Thirty-Five Million Twenty-One Thousand Five Hundred Twelve Dollars To Three Hundred Fifty-Eight Million Two Hundred Fifty-Six Thousand Four Hundred Fifty-Three Dollars. Statutory Expenditures From Fifty-Two Million Three Hundred Thirty-Two Thousand Three Hundred Eighty-Six Dollars To Forty-Nine Million Nine Hundred Thirty-Seven Thousand Four Hundred Fifty-Dollars. Public And Private Revenues Offset By Appropriations From Two Million One Hundred Seventy-Two Thousand Thirty-Nine Dollars To Sixteen Million Six Hundred Seventy Thousand Six Hundred Seventy-Seven Dollars. Operations Excluded From Caps From Eleven Million Three Hundred Thousand Seven Hundred Twenty-Two Dollars To Twenty-Seven Million Seven Hundred Twenty-Four Thousand Three Hundred Sixty Dollars. Municipal, Municipal Debt Service From Fifty-Nine Thousand Eight Hundred Fifty-One Thousand, Fifty-Nine Million Eight Hundred Fifty-One Thousand One Hundred Sixty-Eight Dollars. That Remains The Same At Fifty-Nine Million Eight Hundred Fifty-One Thousand One Hundred Sixty-Eight Dollars. Total Deferred Charges From Nine Million Three Hundred Eighty-Three Thousand Dollars To Seven Million Five Hundred Forty-One Thousand One Hundred Seventy-Two Dollars. Reserve For Uncollected Taxes From One Million Five Hundred Thirty-Eight Thousand Three Hundred Seventy-One Dollars To One Million Eight Hundred Forty-Six Thousand Seven Hundred Thirty-Six Dollars And Eighty-Six Cents. Total General Appropriations From Five Hundred Million Nine Hundred Twelve Thousand Eight Hundred Ninety-One Dollars To Five Hundred Sixteen Million Six Hundred Forty-One Thousand One Hundred Forty-Six Dollars And Eighty-Six Cents. So Notice Is Hereby Given That This Resolution Was Published In The Newspaper On September Eleventh And This Is A Public Hearing On This Budget Amendment. We'd Ask Everyone To Stay Only To This Budget Amendment. Would Anyone Kindly Step Forward? I See Mrs. Ballser.
Uh, Yes. Uh, Before I Even Start Can I Ask You One Question? What Is The Tax Rate?
We Wouldn't Know That Until The County Tax Administrator Takes Our Adopted Budget, Takes The Budget Adopted By The County Of Hudson And That Of The Public Schools And Blends Them.
You Figure It Out?
Yeah. You Gonna Answer It, Bob?
Yeah, I'm Just Trying To Put The Microphone On, Sorry. Alright, So The, The Municipal Rate Will Be Thirty-Six Dollars And Sixty-Five Cents And We Are Projecting That The Overall Rate Will Be Seventy-Four Thirty-Three. Both Will Be Decreases From Last Year.
Okay. Uh, The Question I Have Starting From The Beginning Of The Page, Mr. Byrne Did A Great Job Reading All That. Um, Do We Have Sixteen Million Dollars As Reserve Or Is That Just On Paper? Or Did We Spend Some Of That Reserve Yet?
You're Speaking Of The Surplus?
Yes, Surplus, Yes.
Uh, We Have Not Spent That That Is Available To Be Used In The Budget.
So As Of December Thirty-First You Still Expect To See Sixteen Million Dollars In Reserve Or Not? Like Say The End Of The, Of December Thirty-First?
Of This Year.
Of This Year, Yes.
Do I Expect To? Uh, We're Hoping To Regenerate Enough To Use Next Year. You Know, We, We Anticipate You Know Getting Close To That Number If Not More.
Uh, The Reason Why I'm Saying Is, Well, You Know Obviously We Don't Know If We Gonna Have Lot Of Snow And Whatnot. But I, I Like To See Some Of Our Debt Being Paid Off Instead Of The Constant Be Sitting There And The Debt Is, You Know, It Keeps Being There. Uh, The Other, I Do See That The Budget Increased But Then I Realized As Mr. Byrne Was Reading It That A Lot Of That Was Grant Money So I Was Not Exactly That Concern. But I Wanna Go Down To Some Of The Amendments And I Do Notice That Tower Of America According To Mayor Philip He Said At The Caucus Meeting That They Are Now Online And They Are Now Paying Full Taxes. But I Do See That They Are Paying A Hundred And Eighty-Seven Thousand Dollars. So Are They Online Or Are They Paying Taxes?
That Was Money From The Earlier The Year Now They Are Currently Online.
They're Calling Online, Okay. And I Do See That We Have Different Fluctuations And What They're Giving Us In Terms Of The Bated Tax. Some Of Them Are Decreased And Some Of Them Are An Increase But It's Not Exactly What They Said. Obviously The Councilman Explained To Me Which I'm, I'm Aware Of. When They Come Here Said They're Gonna Pay Us Money Well, You Know, It's, It's The Navy Who Paid This Kind Of Money. It's Not An Exact Figure. I See That We're Gonna Go Down In Land Sales From Eight Million To Five Million. What Happened With The Reduction Of The Land Sales?
We Didn't Sell Fifteen.
We Removed The Liberty Storage Building From The Budget.
Which One? Couldn't You Give Both Of Them?
The Liberty Storage On.
Liberty Storage, We Couldn't Sell That?
Fifteen East London Avenue.
Okay. And We Did Sell The Land And Watershed Property? The Other One?
Oh, The Split Rock?
Yes.
That's The Three Point One Million.
Hope That's The Last Watershed Property We Sell Because As The City Is Growing I Think We Need More To Keep Our Watershed Property. Uh, Let Me See.
We Sold It To The State Just So Everyone.
Well, It's Just The Fact That As The.
Sold To The State Is A Conservation Easement. Okay, Just So Everyone Knows.
Okay. So As The City Grows With Numbers I'm Worried About The Water. I See That We Have. Thank You.
I Can't Hear You.
We Retain Ownership With The Water He Says. Um, I See That There's, Um, Let Me See, Architecture And Engineering That's Being Changed Around Till We Have A New Department And A New Division Next Year?
Yes, What Happened? There Was An Organizational Change. The Architecture Engineering Used To Be Under The Department Of Public Works. Uh, There Was An Order Passed A Few Meetings Ago Removing It To, And Added To The Department Of Administration. So We Had To Set Up New Accounts Eliminate The Old And Add The New.
Okay. And I See That We Having An Increase In Recreation? Is That Because We Have More Parks Now Planned?
That Was For The Additional Seasonals We Hired This Summer.
Seasonal, Okay. And I'm Wanna Say The Same Thing Over Here. The Same Thing About Human Resources? Is There Any Change There? Is That Human Resource Office?
We, We Just Created A Department.
Created A Department Of M U Resources So We Had To Move It From A Division Under Administration And Add It As Its Own Department And Create Its Own Budget Lines.
Okay. Um, We're Putting Money Aside For The Statue Of Stuyvesant And I Just Sold That Statue In The County Park So Will That Money Be Put Aside For That Statue Or Will We Just Kind Of, Kind Of Roll Over? I Mean That's, I Hate To See Money Just Laying In There And Later On The City Comes Along And Grabs It For Something Else. I Hope It's Being Used For That One Part.
Yes, It Was A Donation Specifically For That Purpose.
Yeah. Okay. Now I See That On The Last Page You Had Excluded From Caps And It Went From Eleven Million Three To Twenty-Seven Million Dollars. Why A Great Jump Like That?
That's The Grant Change. That's The Additional Grants To The Budget.
Okay. And Again We're At Fifty-Nine Million Dollars And, And That Which Is Kind Of Scary. I Also Noticed That We're Getting Less Money For The, For The Board Of Ed And That's A Concern Because I'm Afraid That We May Have To Make That Up On The Board Of Ed Thing. Um, Is There Any Concern From The, From The State? I Just, I Don't, It Was In The Beginning, Mr. Byrne Saw That, Let Me See.
The Revenue In The Front Page?
Yes, Uh, It Is, Um, State Allows With Building For School Aid. It Was Five Point Four Million To Four Point Seven Million. That Went Down. Is That Because Of Any Buildings Already Existing Or Not?
No, That's The, That's Service We're Receiving From The State To Cover. The Difference Is Now Made Up If You Notice There's An Equal Amount Increase On The Revenue Line Addition To Local District School Tax.
Okay.
Yes. It Pays Out As The Service Gets Paid.
And, And My Only Comment To The Council Is That This Is The One Thing You Must Do Every Year. And I Think You're Allowing The Mayor To Get Away With Spending The Money And Not Holding Him Accountable. Because I'm Not Saying The Mayor Did Anything Wrong But It Is Your Job. It Is Your Job To, To, He Has To Run The, The Camp, He Has To Run The City. That's His Job. And He Doesn't Tell You For, Ask You For Advice On How He Runs The City. He Doesn't Call You Up And Say Should I Do This? But The One Legal Obligation You Do Have Is This. And He's Spending The Money And You Allow Him To Spend The Money While Really Him You Control The Postings. I Mean That's The One Thing. I'm Quite Sure President Obama Wish Congress Was As Nice As You Are To The Mayor Philip. That's My Comment. And I Like To See In The Future.
Come Back To This, You're Making.
I Like To Come Back, Okay. Well, What I Would Like To See Next Year I Like To Get Budget Out In February And I Wanna See You To Be In Control Of The Budget. And Not Attack The Mayor. I Said The Same Thing When Philip Was Up There And Haley Was Mayor. Thank You Very Much.
Thank You.
Riyaz? Try To Speak Slow Enough For The Court Reporter To Get You.
Riyaz Wahid.
Okay, You Have To See The Panic In Her Eyes When You Get Started. Go Ahead.
Alright, Um, We Have A School Aid, Local School Aid Two Point Four Two, Four To Six Million. Uh, Could You Give Me A Breakup Of What It Is As Revenue? The First Page?
Sure, This Is, Uh, The Police Department Provides Services To The Schools In Terms Of Security At The High Schools And That's, I Think The Middle School Maybe A Couple Other Schools. They Also Provide For The Truancy Program. They Provide For A Gang Initiative Program. So Board Of Ed Reimburses Us For The Costs Associated For Providing Those Cops During The School Year.
Yeah, Um, I Was There In The Board Of Ed Meeting And I Saw A Different Number.
Riyaz, Back Up And Slow Down And We'll, And We'll All Hear.
I, I Was There In The Board Of Education Meeting And I Saw A Different Number There. I Saw A Number That One Point Nine Million.
Right, That'd Be For Next Year's Budget. They've Put Us On Notice That In The.
That's For The Next.
The Two Thousand Fourteen Fifteen Budget That's What They're Gonna, You Know, Allocate For Us.
Okay. Now, Um, On The Same Page If You Come Down There's The Fourth Authority Global Terminal. The Revenue Had Gone Down From Two Point Seven Million To One Point Three Six Million.
That Was Strictly Just A Clerical Error. They Doubled The Number By Mistake.
Pardon?
There Was A Clerical Error In Our Collector's Office. They Doubled The Number By Mistake. It's Exact, It's A Double.
It Is The Same Number.
Yeah, They Got Reduced, You Know, It's Two Point Seven, It Got Reduced Down To One Point Three Six. It Was An Error, They Doubled It.
What Is The Correct Number?
One Million Three Hundred Sixty Thousand.
It Was An Error Which Was Corrected. You Divide That Two Million Seven Hundred Twenty Thousand And Sixty Dollars By Two. You See That It Was An Error Doubled The Figure.
Okay.
So Now It's The Correct Figure Of One Million.
I Got That, Okay.
Hundred Sixty Thousand Thirty Dollars.
Alright, The Next Page If You Go To, I, I Just Wonder Here In Some Places You Added Salaries And Wages And Other Expenses. In Some Places You Did Not Add Other Expenses. Like For Example Police. Salaries And Wages Hundred Million Plus. Other Expenses Three Point One Four. The Total Is Not Hundred Millions. It Should Be Hundred And Three Million, Am I Right? Or Hundred Four Million In, In Plus.
What's The Question?
We Have Police And We Have Department Of Public Safety.
The Total's Wrong.
No, The Total.
Yeah.
Right?
The Total Is Wrong On This Talk But You Are Right.
Okay. Now, Um, Coming To The Public Safety Director's Office, Right? Uh, How Many People Work There Now? For The Salary Of One Point Four Two Million? One Point Zero Four Two Million?
How Many People Is It?
Yeah.
Question? In The Public Safety Director's Office?
Yeah.
Uh, That, That Information's Not Rarely Available.
We Don't Have, Okay, That's Fine. Now The Same Error On The Architectural And Engineering D P W. If You Add The Numbers, Salaries And Wages, The Total Remains Same. Salary, Wages And Other Expenses.
You Are Correct.
Alright. Now, I, I Guess That Is The. Now, You Had One Department Of Human Resources And You Spent Around One Point Zero Nine Million. Now You Have Created Five, Six Departments. The Total Is Coming To One Point Two Five Three Million. Right? Why Do We Have To Create More Departments? And To Add More Burden Here?
Can You Repeat The Question?
Yeah, You Had One Department Of Human Resources Last Year. You Spent One Point Zero Nine Four Million. Today You Have More Departments Like Director's Office, Workforce Management, Health Benefits, Pension, Payroll And The Total Is Coming To One Point Two Five Three Million Dollars.
Yeah.
Please Use, Use The Microphone. The, The Number For Last Year For The Division Of Human Resources It Was A Division Within Administration. That Was Only Created In September Of Two Thousand Thirteen. Those Numbers Reflect Only Four Months Of The Fiscal Year. The Numbers You See In Here Reflect Greater Than Four Months.
Right, And You Have A Group Health Insurance That Has Gone Up Approximately Three And A Million Dollars.
That's Employees Medical Insurance, Dental Insurance, Prescription, Life Insurance. It's, And It's Active In Retiring Employees.
That, That's More Than Five Percent And I Hope You Know Like, Um, In Future You Will Seriously Consider Citizens Campaign And, Or Civic J C's Recommendations And Follow Good Practices To Buy These Insurances Instead Of Going Through Brokers. Alright? Now, You Come To The Last Page. This Is Where I Have A Problem. Now If You Add, You, You Say Your Number Is Five Hundreds In The Last Page, Right? You Said You Have Five Hundred Sixteen Million Six Hundred Forty-One Thousand Hundred Forty-Six Dollars Is Your Final Budget, Right?
Yes.
If I Add All Of That You Give Above It's Coming To Five Hundred Twenty-One Million Eight Hundred Twenty-Eight Thousand Zero One Six. If You Have A Calculator, Council President, I Suggest You To Add All These Numbers And See What You Come Up With. That's Not Five Hundred Sixteen Million. It's Five Hundred Twenty-One Million.
Which Numbers?
The Last Page.
Yep.
You Have The Numbers Here. You See Here? The, The Last Page. Right?
The, Here's The Explanation. The Numbers, The Numbers In These, In This Amendment Only Reflects The Numbers That Changed. It's Not Every Number In The Budget Document. The Budget Document Ties Into The Numbers Here. Uh, So, So The Grand Total Is Accurate. The Numbers Here Only Ref, The Numbers On This Amendment Are Only The Numbers That Changed. Not Every Number In The Budget Document.
Alright, Otherwise I Would Have Been Read, I'd Still Be Reading.
Yes. Wait, Thank You Very Much.
Thank You, Mr. Wahid.
Thank You.
Public Hearing On The Ordinance, I Mean On The Budget? Anyone Else?
Motion.
About B A, Can I Ask You A Few Questions Because I Receive.
Hey, Wait, 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 Wait.
Let's Finish The Public Hearing.
Let's Have A Motion Please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion By Counselperson Ramchall Seconded By Counselperson Coleman. And This Is To Close The Public Hearing On The Two Thousand, The Calendar Year Two Thousand Fourteen Municipal Budget Amendment. Counselperson Gudjuski.
Aye.
Ramchall.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
LeVarah. Closed.
Aye.
Okay. We've Closed Nine Zero. Council Members, I Might, We Have So Many Second Reading Ordinances. I'm Thinking If We're Gonna Have A Substantial Budget Discussion When You're About To Vote On The Budget Later We Can Have That Discussion Unless You.
I'd Like To Defer To It Now.
Yeah, But Can I?
We Have.
Can We Defer To The Budget Resolution And You Can Have A, We Can Have A Conversation?
Okay.
Yep.
Oh, You Can Have A Discussion. We'll Vote On It When, But We Do Have.
Can We Defer To It? We, Can I Get A Motion To Defer To?
Motion.
Ten A.
You Wanna Go To Ten A?
Ten A, Right?
This Is A Motion To Defer To Ten A. We Have A Motion By Counselperson Osborne, Correct?
Yes.
Seconded By?
Councilwoman Coleman.
Seconded By Councilwoman Coleman To Defer To Ten A. Counselperson Gudjuski.
Aye.
Ramchall.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman. LeVarah.
Aye.
Alright, The Motion Carries. We're Talking Now About The Resolution Ten A Which Is A Resolution Adopting, Resolution To Adopt A Calendar Year Two Thousand And Fourteen Municipal Budget.
So If You'd Like To Make Comments, Councilmen, You're On The Budget And Ask Questions?
Yeah.
This Is The Time.
Council President, How Do You Want Me To Do This? Do You Want Me To Go Down The Roll?
No, Let's, Let's.
For Mate, We've Just Made A Motion To Defer To It. Do You Want Me To Go Down The Roll And Have Council Members Ask Questions As They Vote? Do you want me to go down the roll and have council members ask questions as they vote? Or how do you wanna do this?
I think if they can ask questions.
And then vote.
And then vote.
Okay, sir.
I, I, I have a couple of questions. Number one is, we received this at 5, 5:45 today. I mean, we're planning to know what we're voting on. And then I also have a question here.
That, that's not true. That, that was out with the agenda on Thursday.
But you voted on September 10th, Councilman Bajano.
I know, but we got these figures today at 5:45, the whole thing.
No, we didn't get these figures, we got these figures broken down.
That, that was the, that was the budget amendment introduced on September 10th, Councilman.
Yeah, two weeks ago.
There were no changes there. You've had, that was two weeks old, though.
Bob, I wanna ask you a question. You have on your memorandum here.
It's my memorandum.
A number reflects merit, calls, management across the board raises broken down as follows.
330,000 increases for management statutory employees and City Council, 470,000 was a pool of money for merit increases. Could you explain that whole thing?
So yes, there's, there's a pool of money in the budget, I should say, there's a line item in the budget, salary adjustment fund. There is $800,000 currently in the amended budget request. That money is being set aside if the administration and if the council decides for possibly, you know, management increase. The management employees in the city have not received any raises since 2011, any cost of living increases. There's also money allocated in there if the council chooses to reintroduce an ordinance for call increases for the statutory officers, directors, the council themselves. And then it'll also leave a pool of money if the administration decides to reward those long-serving, deserving employees with a merit increase. So that's what that money's being set aside for.
All right, because I, as I understand, the young people in our office haven't received raises and...
Rich people can't hear you.
They haven't received raises in several years, and I hope they get raises. And I hope this money is used for that.
That is what the purpose is, Councilman.
And as far as this goes, Bob, every time I hear, uh, there's a change, this is gonna change, that's gonna change, and, uh, as I said, this was dropped on us at 5:45 today.
With all due respect, Councilman, that is the same document that was introduced at the last council meeting. There have been no changes to it in two weeks.
Councilman, that, what you alluded to is being dropped on you tonight. I gave you a courtesy copy of the amendment that you approved on September 10th.
Were there any changes, Bob, Robert? Were there any changes on this?
No, there are no changes.
That was so that you could follow along while I was reading and...
Okay, well, I don't know that, see...
...answer questions from the public if they had any questions.
Yeah, but we don't know that. Whoa, 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 Chris. You had, you had, you had a, a, a group of you who got together over the last couple, month or so with the budget, uh, and we, a few of us didn't even know anything about it. One.
Bob, can I ask just a few questions, you know? When we see that there are public and private revenue?
I don't want to ask that question.
So last year we got 26 million dollars, and this year we got only 16 million dollars. I never get, actually, opportunity to ask those things. Why this year, like, a 10 million dollar less than last year? Do you have any reason?
Well, a couple of reasons. One, you know, the, the grants don't all come in on January 1st of each year. They come in throughout the year. So, you know, even though we're adopting the budget today, there could be meetings after today that you're accepting more grants into the budget. So that 16 million number will more than likely go up a little bit. Um, I think, you know, there was a, we got two grants in a short period of time last year for the job employment training. For some reason, it wasn't added to the budget before, so we had to add it to last year's budget, the previous year's plus the current years. So that, that was a big number, so that explains a lot of what you're asking. So the, the job employment training grant, uh, was not added to the 2012 budget timely, so we had to add it in beginning of 13, and then when the 13 money came in, we had to add it in later in the year. So that's a big, big number that, that explains what you're asking. But you'll, you'll see, they're called Chapter 159 resolutions. After the next meeting, I'm being told, you'll see one. That'll be an additional grant, so that number will go up.
And, um, Mr. Revenue, Section G, I see that the old item, but one thing is I'm not sure that the lateral pilot program, I mean, tax abatement, some project they take, buy-up program, their contribution, certain amount of dollars, the city of Jersey City, those kind of amount, I didn't see any as a revenue in the year. Where do they belong to that?
The, the buy-up money was not intended to be a revenue in the budget. The intent of that buy-up money was to be earmarked for specific purposes as determined by the council down the road. I believe it was education, recreation purposes. So that money is not a, a revenue in the budget, it's being set aside for a specific purpose down the road as determined by the council.
It's not going into the general fund.
It's not in the general fund, it's not being realized as a revenue. That money is still there, ready to be used.
Okay. Now...
Anyone else have other questions while Councilman gathers his thoughts?
Perhaps I'll call the roll and anyone has any question while they vote.
Okay. Let's call them.
All right. We'll start with Councilperson Gudjuski.
No, no, no. When they get, when he calls, you can ask.
Okay, Councilperson Gudjuski.
Aye again.
Department of Recreation, actually, they increased 21% their salary. They, any special reasoning?
It was additional seasonal hire this summer. There was a, a huge campaign for youth employment. Yeah, it was like a thousand, you know, students were hired this summer. We committed to that.
Okay. Then when I get there from the, uh, the presentation from the Deputy Mayor, Vivian, she said the funding come from the private and the public sector. So she mentioned that most of the fund come from the, uh, private sector to raise the money?
There was some, yes, that, that is true, Councilman.
When they say some, how much was it?
Yeah, I want to say like, I want to say about $200,000, Councilman.
$200,000?
Right.
Reason I'm asking that...
Through, through EDC, about $200,000 from the Clean Communities Grant, plus what our recreation staff hired.
Because we printed there for the Department of Recreation, for the seasonal works, the temporary works, 1.3, 1.35 million dollars. And we printed another, actually, almost 300,000 top of a 1.35 million dollars. So I scratch my head. No, no, we talk almost 1.6 million dollars for seasonal work with just a summer time. It's a whole lot of money. When they increase 21%, if anybody has a plan to how we're gonna spend the money, they're not gonna spend over 21%. If they, if they increase 3, 5%, what maximum, 10% would be understandable. But when they increase 21% of that seasonal, temporary teenager hiring, then there's something wrong in that department, especially calculation of the manpower's and how they're gonna plan to spend the money.
Yeah, the, uh, Summer Jobs Program was a, a widely discussed program, and it was a huge success. And, uh, I think it's a great thing that we had so many, so many, uh...
Too close.
Too close? Uh, it was, it was a huge success, and it was a great thing that we had so many applicants that came out, and we made our best efforts to hire as many of the Jersey City youth as we could. And, uh, I, I think it's a, it's a, it's a great thing for the city, and, and I think it's a, it's, it's one of those things where that was prioritized, and then the money's being spent for that.
But I would just like to respectfully say that departments don't have the authority to spend more than the City Council has said that they can spend.
Right.
I agree with you.
Right. That doesn't change the fact that it's a good program, but from a process perspective, Councilman Yun is absolutely right.
What I think's gonna move this meeting is if I call the roll, we called Councilperson Gudjuski, who voted in the affirmative. Councilperson Ramchall.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajano.
No.
Councilperson Yun.
No.
Councilperson Osborne.
Um, sir, I obviously have some comments here. Um, not questions, but comments. Months ago, Mayor, months ago, Mayor Phil proposed a city budget with a 2% decrease, which was introduced by the City Council. Tonight, my colleagues and I will deliver on that budget goal. However, we had hoped to do even more. The budget we introduced had on paper the theoretical ability to allow for further decreases by as much as an additional 3%. While the intentions were good, a basic sensitivity analysis would have made it clear that was not realistic to anticipate or communicate out such an ideal income, outcome. Such a decrease coming would, coming to be would rely on each and every turn of events swerving out in our favor. In effectively managing a budget and expectations, we have to hope for the best, prepare for the worst. We cannot be responsibly certain that we will improve our revenue stream by predicting the outcome and event, of an event before it happens, be it a reworked ambulance contract, savings from a complex merger with an independent authority, or revenues from selling city-owned land. We also have to prepare for the occasional unpredictable drop in pre-existing revenue sources. For example, due to the heavy winter and snow on the roads, the city didn't recognize as much money from parking tickets as projected based on historical assumptions. So how can we work smarter and actually hit ambitious budget decreases? By strenuously and rigorously managing those budgetary factors that are entirely within our control. The over-budget overtime expenses of three departments, Recreation, Public Safety, and Public Works, were the biggest cost drivers impacting Jersey City taxpayers that we should have been able to manage. On this point, I want to be crystal clear to all of our city's department directors, spending more than you have been authorized to spend by the City Council is not acceptable. Here are four ideas that can improve the budget process and outcome next year. Number one, the City Council should adopt the budget as soon as is legally allowed and make amendments afterwards. If any items are uncertain, such as the Parking Authority merger, we should not include them in the initial budget, but should amend them in the adopted, amend the adoption budget if and when they come to fruition. Number two, departments who demonstrate that they cannot manage their budget should not have management control over their fiscal officers. For departments where additional accountability is needed, the city should move this oversight function to the Department of Business Administration. Number three, prior to budget adoption, the city should have in place a hiring freeze, except for replacement of existing headcount. If the City Council cannot enact this through law, the mayor should enact through executive order. Number four, the city should prepare and the City Council should receive monthly budget updates that include budget to date and actual to-date figures. While a budget decrease is good, the city can and should do a better job at managing its budget. I will vote aye this year, but these things better happen next year.
Councilperson Coleman.
I did have some comments to make, but in lieu of all the comments that are being made, I think my only comment would be I'd like to have the budget prepared and ready for adoption before three-fourths of the year is over. So I'm just requesting that you guys work on this more diligently and get us a budget that we can adopt long before September, when we've already spent three-fourths of the budget. So that's what I would ask, but this year, it's our first time out. I know we had some things that held us up, and I wanna say, great job, guys, what you gave us. However, I need you guys to look at how we stand here. We need a budget before September. I'm gonna vote aye this year, but I'm gonna expect to have a budget before September to vote on.
I have to agree with Councilwoman Coleman. Uh, one of the things that we're definitely gonna press on is for you guys to have a budget definitely available to us by September next year moving forward, you know? With that, I vote aye.
Um, before I vote, I would like to say I do agree with, um, Councilwoman Osborne. And, um, we did discuss, um, the department heads reporting to their business administration that are 5% over their budget. Now, we know this is our first budget, and they done spent so much now, but is there a mechanism that we can put in place today that they can report to the business administration? Because this is a problem, some of them is like 5% over.
Asking a question.
Right.
I don't know, you can't do a resolution today, right?
Tomorrow or next time we can do a resolution.
What, what can be do, we can make an organizational change and recommend that fiscal officers don't get paid by the departments, and they get paid, you know, they get transferred to the Department of Administration, and we could assign them out, or designate them to be the fiscal officer. So therefore, they answer to me as opposed to their own department director.
Is that doable?
That is doable. I haven't budgeted all those fiscal officers in my budget, though.
Yeah, I, I know, but we wanna make sure that it's clear.
So, I mean, this could be some, we should probably have some further discussions and maybe, uh, you know, implement it for January 1st.
Okay.
You know, we could say, you know, as we go through the budget process beginning in November with the departments, you know, I can work with the administration, discuss transferring all those fiscal people to me.
Sure.
And then budget it for them next year.
Sure.
Yeah, we should probably just, um, have some discussions about it, 'cause I think it could also just be a simple, uh, all departments report to the BA as it is, so the BA could just probably issue a, a memo requesting, you know, a monthly spending report and with a highlight of anything over whatever, a certain amount. So it might be a very simple procedural way of just doing a...
Yeah, it could be something simple, but I wanna make sure it's on record, so we know it is followed through.
So what we should do is make sure, you know, next caucus, we come back with, uh, you know, with whatever the, the response should be after we discuss with everyone.
Okay.
Okay? And we'll talk, and so let's, just remember to bring it up at the next caucus so we get it on the record.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Can I?
Go ahead.
Now that she said that, my question to you guys is if some mechanism is put in place that will not allow a department to, to spend 21% over their budget, like, uh, Councilman Yun said, what happens when they reach that mark? Is that department non-functional now for, or, or do they have to come to the, the council to get a request for, uh, an increase? Or, I mean, in other words, how does that work?
So, I mean, my discussion with the, with the...
Request.
This is the adjustment we're making right now.
So what I, what I, we discussed with the, the subcommittee, uh, earlier is that, uh, maybe we, we impose a hiring freeze after the budget's introduced, and the only hiring that might be permitted are to replace those who left. So if one goes in, we can, you know, one goes out, one comes in. Uh, if anything is urgent that needs to happen, maybe that director needs to come to a caucus meeting, explain himself or herself to the council saying, you know, I know there's a, you know, a little freeze, but this is what I'm looking to do, and, and we can go from there. Um, you know, with regards to Councilman Yun's comment, you know, we, uh, you know, if there's an initiative that wasn't budgeted for in January, but all of a sudden it's June, again, I think we should, you know, the director should come to the council and say, you know what, we're looking to do this this summer, you know, it's not budgeted. You know, I think that's a fair request, Council. It's not, definitely not unreasonable.
Thank you.
Back to you, Councilperson Waterman, you were voting.
With that, I vote aye.
Council President.
So, um, let me start by saying, as I said at the last meeting, with regard to delivering a, a more timely budget, I'll, I'll take the heat for that on the City Council. Did not anticipate the, uh, the hurdles that would come with, uh, trying to, um, how it would impact the budget process with regard to the Jersey City Parking Authority and our efforts to consolidate there. Certainly that won't happen again, um, with the, when we take on the Jersey City and Centered Authority or any other autonomous agencies. Authority or any other autonomous agencies. But no excuses, I'll take the heat on that. And we can definitely deliver a more timely budget going forward. You know, the, as, as Councilwoman Osborne and Councilman Yoon pointed out as well, the overtime costs and the driver, driving the budget, the increases in the budget, not the increases, because it's actually a decrease in the budget here overall, but the increases in those salaries, those are unacceptable. And we did discuss in this budget committee whatever measures we can take, and whether it's doing a memo or whatever the case might be, those fiscal officers within those departments, and I'll add, and have great respect for our police department, we know they're under man, but they, they also had increases in their, and over, overspent on their overtime as well in that area as well. But parks and automotive and recreation, and so we saw in, and so for the viewing public, I would suggest to you that it's no coincidence that there's been a change in leadership in the police division as well as in the Department of Public Works. And that's in, in large part, I would think, think and hope that it was driven by an eye towards fiscal accountability on behalf of the taxpayers of Jersey City. With that, there are, there are some, some good things in this budget, I would say. We are seeing some, hopefully, new hires with the municipal court, and we saw reductions in our municipal court revenues. Hopefully with the new hires going forward, that'll provide them the, the kind of manpower and personnel that will allow them to generate the kind of revenue that, that comes, that's available with our municipal court fines. We also see some new hires on construction code, and I believe we can still, will still realize those this year. And for all the development that's going on in Jersey City, it's a real opportunity there as well for us to keep pace with the development that's going on and be able to again realize additional revenues on behalf of the taxpayers of Jersey City. You know, the, the, the opportunity for those salary adjustments, longtime employees, I think everybody on this council during the departmental budget hearings was unanimously in favor of doing something to correct longstanding, flat salaries for certain municipal employees across the board, and we can do that, but I will also add that on the merit increases Councilman Yoon raised at the last council meeting, that there be criteria be put in place that will, that any merit increases would be based on. And certainly we'd like to see that those criteria before any sort of merit increases are, or adjustments are made to, with those monies. With that, the taxpayers of Jersey City will see on Jersey City's side a two-point, correct me if I'm wrong, 2.17% decrease. Their overall tax rate, when you factor in the county and the schools, will be reduced by 0.4%. So we, we, there are some positives here for the Jersey City taxpayers, and it certainly, we can certainly do more, and we can certainly do better, and we, and we will. So with that, I vote aye.
Calendar year 2014 municipal budget has been finally adopted as amended. 7-2, voting no, Councilmembers Bajana and Yoon. Councilmembers, we have, and members of the public, we have beyond 15 second reading ordinances, but S that you, you come up. This is a public hearing on the first ordinance, we'll recite the title. It's item 4A, City Ordinance 14-103, An Ordinance Authorizing the City of Jersey City to File an Offer of Financial Assistance to Acquire Certain Property Collectively Known as the Sixth Street Embankment from Conrail and Such Other Conrail Properties As Are Necessary to Connect with the Main Line in the Vicinity of C.P. Waldo. This is a public hearing. On the subject ordinance, are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Hello. So I just want to remind everyone who's here to speak, just to speak directly to the ordinance that's being proposed.
My name is Annie Kessler. My husband and I have lived in downtown Jersey City since 1982 and have owned our home in Harpsmith Cove since 1983. I'm the founder and past president of the Harpsmith Cove Association and a past president of the Downtown Coalition of Neighborhood Associations. I've supported preservation of the embankment for public use, including rail and trail, since the beginning of civic activity around this issue in 1998. This was even before the Embankment Coalition was formed. Now I support this ordinance because it will allow for the preservation of the Harpsmith Branch, the last unused rail corridor into the downtown. It's my understanding that an offer of financial assistance is not binding until the Surface Transportation Board sets the terms and the city gets to consider whether or not to accept those terms. This includes the price. To me, it seems obvious that the city should pursue this option. If it turns out that the city can't meet the terms set by the Surface Transportation Board, you can decide then not to go ahead with the financial assistance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
In 2005, Con, I'm so sorry, Stephen Guchardo, 302 Provonia Avenue, Jersey City. In 2005, Conrail sold a rail line it had no right to sell, and the LLCs bought a rail line they had no right to buy. You can't sell a rail line without first legally abandoning it. Conrail and the LLCs asked that you discount or ignore this important fact. The City of Jersey City took all the appropriate steps to prepare to purchase the Sixth Street Embankment. It designated it a municipal landmark, it applied for funding, it passed ordinances codifying its intentions, including exercising eminent domain if necessary. It formed a committee to assist in clarifying all steps necessary. All of this was done before Conrail chose to sell the rail line to the LLCs.
Okay.
Although prepared, the city could not purchase the Sixth Street Embankment because Conrail did not legally abandon the rail line. Instead, they sold the rail line to the LLCs as if it were ordinary real estate.
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, if we could, the ordinance is about an offer of financial assistance.
I'm almost there.
Okay.
I'll be quick.
If everyone does that, Stephen, we need people to come and speak and get to, right to the ordinance.
Some of the items I've mentioned are actually listed in the ordinance, so I am speaking directly to issues that are in the whereas's of the ordinance. It is not ordinary real estate. In 2006, the City of Jersey City asked the Federal Surface Transportation Board to determine the status of the rail line, and in 2007, the STB ruled that the Harpsmiths Branch, including the Sixth Street Embankment, is a line of rail subject to federal abandonment guidelines. Conrail and the LLCs spent the next eight years challenging the status of the line and STB's right to oversee its abandonment, at great expense, pain and suffering to both the city and the public. While delaying in federal court, Conrail and the LLCs filed demolition permits before the Historic Preservation Commission and Zoning Board of Adjustments, which after months before those boards, the permits were denied. The LLCs also sued the City of Jersey City, the Embankment Preservation Coalition, Rails to Trails attorney, the City of Jersey City's attorneys, and other city and private servants of the public good. The Embankment Preservation Coalition has always supported the rail-trail option. In 2012, the EPC supported, and the city passed, an ordinance contingent upon settlement between all parties that would have enabled rail, trail, open space, and development on the Harpsmiths Branch. Unfortunately, this settlement never occurred. I have two more paragraphs. In 2013 and 2014, the federal courts definitively ruled the Harpsmiths Branch is indeed a line of rail. Now we are finally back at STB where the sale of the Sixth Street Embankment should have been reviewed on day one, and still the STB's challenged the authority, I'm sorry, and still the STB's authority continues to be challenged by the LLCs. It is at STB that the city and the public can seek relief from the illegal sale as well as pursue historic and environmental protection remedies. The most powerful form of relief is OFA, which is the ordinance before you, which enables the city to pursue these remedies. The Embankment Preservation Coalition supports OFA because it enables the city to acquire the Harpsmiths Branch and to study suitable uses for it, including implementation of rail, trail, and open spaces deemed appropriate. It is the strongest, most practical, and least expensive option. The city has overwhelming public support for this option, as you can see behind me, and for this option, we encourage you to vote yes. Thank you for your time.
No grain then.
Sorry, Bob.
You're young.
Eric Fleming, 245 Fifth Street. I represent Harpsmith Cove Association, it's a neighborhood association, and Harpsmiths Branch is our northernmost border. I moved to Harpsmith Cove two years after I moved to Jersey City.
On the ordinance, your personal history is exciting, but...
Four years as, four years as neighborhood association president, at no point have we not been in complete support of the embankment being turned into a park. Well, that's my, end of my history lesson. I'm just going to read this, and I'm going to go sit down. Sorry, Bob. We're the neighborhood association in downtown Jersey City, and that has the embankment on our northern border. The HCA has been enthusiastic and consistent supporter of the efforts to preserve the embankment for as long as I can remember. The offer of financial assistance is an excellent step toward preserving the embankment for public use, and for that, we strongly encourage the city council to pass this ordinance today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last name Felicia?
Palmer, P-L-A-P-A-L-M-E-R, 296 Sixth Street, yes. Palmer, yes.
Please begin.
Okay. I, like I said, I live Sixth Street. I live directly across from the embankment, and I am in total support of your adoption of this ordinance. I have been involved in the efforts to preserve the structure for mixed-use rail coexisting with trails since the beginning of the efforts, and I'm asking the council to say, vote yes for the offer of financial assistance tonight. Thank you.
Very good, Bobby, miss me?
You're doing Valerio Lucio?
Valerio Lucio, 298 Second Street. I've lived in Harpsmith Cove for 16 years. During this time, one of the most exciting prospects has been the park on the embankment. The community has put a lot of effort and time in achieving this, and in these 16 years, we've seen the High Line in New York City be completed to splendid, splendid success.
Close and to the...
Okay. And during this time, we've seen the High Line in New York City be completed to wonderful success, and now they're starting one in Queens as well. So we're waiting eagerly for our park, so please pass this so we can get a step further. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Vincent McNamara. I live at 131 Sherman Avenue. I am on the board of the Heights Community Coalition and the Jersey City Reservoir Preservation Alliance. The boards and members of both of these organizations would like the support of the city council for ordinance 14-103. Thank you.
Maureen Crowley, 263 Fifth Street. I'm going to comment very briefly on something probably nobody else is going to comment on, an aspect of the ordinance on planning. Forty years ago, the city had to pick up the pieces of rail bankruptcy, and we did so by focusing on residential commercial development on the waterfront, sorry. To my knowledge, in all these decades, planning for rail itself was done largely at a regional level by the county and by the North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority, of course, with city input and railroad input. This ordinance, however, authorizes what I think for the first time is local planning studies for rail and other public uses of the Harpsmiths Branch. And such local planning should spur a deeper understanding by the city and the public as to the contributions rail could make to sustainability and a diversified economy, not just based on development, when it is implemented with sensitivity to other public needs. It's good not to leave that sort of planning to others, especially to the railroads. Thank you, please vote for the ordinance.
Hi, my name is Jenny Meyer. I live at 495 Monmouth Street. I just want to say that if the ordinance is passed successfully and if we can acquire the embankment via OFA, we can immediately begin work on a rail, rail with trail, even as the city does its in-depth study of what the actual implementation of rail can and should be on the line. Rails with trails are adjacent, they're actually adjacent to or within an active rail corridor. They're safe, common, and growing, and in a 2013 study, Rails to Trails conservancy located 161 Rails with trails in 41 states. That's a 260% increase since 2000. So this is something that people are doing all over the country, and we should do it too, and I fully support the OFA, and thank you.
Joan Koehler, lifelong Jersey City resident, 304.5 Eighth Street. I'm going to read a brief message from the Board of Trustees of the Hamilton Park Neighborhood Association. The Board of Trustees of the Hamilton Park Neighborhood Association strongly urges the passage of City Ordinance 14-103. Our neighborhood association has long supported the efforts of the Embankment Preservation Coalition to protect this treasured tract of land from commercial development and expects to see it one day converted into a public open space this neighborhood so vitally needs. Thank you to Mayor Philip and all the members of the city council who have pledged to fulfill the same vision. We hope this will continue with unanimous passage of 14.103 and all subsequent official action required to turn this plan into a living, breathing, thriving railway and park. Sincerely, Chris Burt, Second Vice President. Thank you.
Hi, Peter Delman, 263 Fifth Street. I'm going to skip a bit and get right to the heart of the matter.
Amen.
Yes. This ordinance enables the city to efficiently pursue acquisition, doing so as consistent with the actions of mayors and councils since at least 2003. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Good evening, Dan Levin, 2600 Kennedy Boulevard. Hello, Council President Lavallo and council members. We have almost an irreplaceable asset, the Harpsmiths stem that runs from, through the cliffs and to downtown. To acquire it today would include eminent domain and almost unbelievable costs, almost wanting to be prohibitive. So a railway wave is an extraordinary, irreplaceable asset we need to look at and study it and plan how we can use it as we move our future and go towards making our city more sustainable, more livable, and providing the jobs we need. This is one step forward to acquire this asset and determine how to best use it for our city. Thank you.
Good evening, Marlene Sandcamp, 91 Bright Street. Good evening, council, good evening, Mr. Byrne. I'm the president, the current president of the Van Vors Park Association. The VBPA has been a long, long-time supporter of the public acquisition of the Sixth Street Embankment, long before I was president. This offer of financial assistance is an important step in preserving this historic open space in our rapidly growing and hopefully the best mid-sized city in America. The VBPA hopes that you will vote yes on this ordinance. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Maury Thomas, M-O-R-Y. I live at 662 Palisade Avenue. I'm here tonight representing the, I'm sorry, M-O-R-Y.
Okay, not like Povich.
Not like Povich.
Last name is?
Thomas.
Thomas, got you.
But if you'd like to talk about it, I can share a story. Um, okay, I'm here tonight to represent the Jersey City Parks Coalition, a member of 22 parks and open spaces across Jersey City, and in addition to that, the Washington Park Association of Hudson County up in the Heights area. As firm believers in protecting and preserving open spaces and improving transportation options in Jersey City, I support the city's offer for financial assistance to preserve the Harpsmith Branch rail corridor for rail, trail, open space, and other public uses. Thank you.
Gally Backer-G, 192 Washington Street. I agree with everything that's...
G-E-R-R-Y?
G-E-R-R-Y.
G-E-R-R-Y, B-A-K...
B-I-R...
R-J-Y.
T-J-Y.
All right.
I guess I haven't been here enough times.
I'm at a, at a... I'm out of, out of practice, Gary.
Yes. Uh, I agree with that the Pinkman said. Urge you to vote in favor of it. Thank you.
One second.
Yes, sir. Uh, good evening. My name is Daniel Horgan. I'm an attorney and I represent the owners of the Sixth Street Embankment. I am here again on behalf of the owners of the Sixth Street Embankment with the somewhat unpleasant task, it appears, of asking you to do what is right in the face of an ordinance that is very wrong. You are considering an ordinance that requires the city to spend millions of dollars, 5.7 is what you're authorizing, and restore freight service to the Harpsmiths line in downtown Jersey City. You are about to authorize the city to make commitments to the Federal Surface Transportation Board to become a common carrier of freight by rail. You are willing to do this because you've been told that it's a cheap way to confiscate my client's property, so that a few people, most of them here tonight, in the most affluent water of the city, can have another park. And you've been told that my clients aren't willing to work with the city to resolve how the embankment can be used and preserved. Finally, you've been told that you shouldn't listen to anything that I may say because there's litigation pending. Well, that's exactly why you should listen. Please listen for just a few more minutes. I will be fairly brief and very much to the point. It seems that you have listened to all the bad advice given you by the city. You have done nothing with the petition we filed back in May, and I was here in June or July on that. No one has been willing to have any discussion with us. And you held a council caucus, which, in all due respect to Mr. Byrne, uh, we think violates the Open Public Meetings Act. Now you're about to act. The citizens of the city elected you to follow the law and to be transparent in what you do and to do the right thing. Here's why this is, this ordinance is more important than what you've been told. First, the ordinance isn't a good thing. It's directed specifically against my clients in an effort to rob them of their property. It's wrong for the government to single out anyone and use its power to take someone's property. You can condemn it for a park if you want, but you have to pay for it. You're not gonna get it for a dollar. You're not gonna get it for $3 million. That's not going to happen. Second, you don't have the permission of the state transportation officials to appropriate and spend this money. You're ignoring the law that requires you to get that permission. Can you really ask yourself and say that that's okay to ignore the law? Because you'd criticize any other city official that ignored the law. Third, your minds must be closed to what you're doing. They must be. Do freight trains make any sense on Sixth Street to anyone here? Of course not. You didn't hear about freight trains tonight from all these people. But you're willing to have the city promise and then only later to say, "Well, sorry, uh, we really just wanted a park. We didn't mean that when we had 5.7 million in freight and common carrier obligations and so forth." You're saying that to the federal government in a formal application authorized by each of you. Last, and maybe most important, we wrote to you and gave you a copy of our letter to Donna Moore and two other letters. Donna Moore is the city's chief financial officer. We showed you that you can't use bond money as a slush fund for lawyers, for private interest groups, some of these neighborhood groups are here tonight, or to violate our client's property or due process rights. We've told you, and I'm telling you again tonight, that the city has misrepresented itself in public documents and financial statements for bond offerings made in the municipal securities market. And what you're about to do with this ordinance is another securities fraud on the investing public because you can't issue tax-exempt bonds for a park and then use the money for litigation or to build a freight line for paying customers. Doesn't work. If you do this, you run the very real risk that the SEC or even the state of New Jersey will fine the city and ban it from issuing new bonds or refinancing the city's debt. We showed you the finance notice. This is the state of New Jersey that says this. This is the Securities and Exchange Commission. Okay? Somebody's told you that's not right? We'll get to that. That could cost the city more than any park. The budget you adopted tonight indicates that this city is going to spend almost $60 million this year in debt service. It's going to spend $2.5 million on maintaining its parks. That will give you-
Sir, can you speak to-
Yes.
Your OFA?
I am, because it's five, I will, Mr. Lavallo. Because it's 24 times as much money for debt and for municipal finance, and if you lose that ability, quite frankly, then it's going to cost you much more than any park ever will, even buying this property. I would request that the letters to the city council be made part of the record, together with their enclosures, Mr. Byrne, if we could arrange to do that. And also, there is another letter, which I was given a copy of tonight by Mr. Riffen, who might be back with me, um, which was not on the communications, probably because it came in late. If that could be made part of the record too, if that's possible. I'd ask you not Riffen, R-I-F-F.
Mr. Riffen.
Riffen. I am.
I have a copy of it for Robert.
I don't, I don't know if you have it or not. But my request is that you stop, you table this. If you think you have any disagreement with what I say, make sure that I'm wrong and you're right. Because if you don't, it could cost the city dearly. Thank you.
Okay, the council, council-
We still have a public hearing.
Okay.
No, we're, we're still having the public hearing.
Oh, good.
The gentleman, he shouldn't be heard. Your last name?
I'm Eric.
Okay, I'll need your card then, Eric.
Members of the city council.
Eric Stromeyer.
My name is Eric Stromeyer. I'm the vice president and chief operating officer of a company called CNJ Rail Corporation, based here in central New Jersey. Our firm currently manages a 20-mile-long short line in Colorado that runs between South Fork and just outside Creed. In 2009, our company was engaged in attempting to acquire another illegally, illegally abandoned line of railroad from Conrail in the southern portion of Jersey City. At that time, we became aware of the ongoing, uh, litigation regarding the Harpsmiths line. And after giving it some evaluation, we filed with the Surface Transportation Board a notice of intent to file an OFA. So it is not just the city that sought to do this. There was also private interest as well. Today, I would like to speak to you for the first time, uh, to give you a little bit of, some insight as to why would private rail industry have an interest, uh, in Jersey City? At a recent meeting, uh, informational gathering meeting that was held here at City Hall, CNJ brought a number of potential shippers and receivers of goods that are-
Sir, I hear you said you're gonna speak about how private rail industry has an interest in this. If you could tie it, private rail's interest to this particular ordinance, the offer of financial assistance. Okay?
Sure. The, uh, offer of financial assistance for this particular line, uh, we've had numerous communications with your, uh, outside counsel, Mr. Charles Monteng. Uh, we had provided, uh, when he had indicated that he was looking to see whether or not there was substantive need, uh, for rail freight shipping options here in Jersey City. Uh, we responded to the request by bringing forth potential shippers who have the capability of utilizing the Harpsmiths line for general freight service. We are unaware at this point if that has ever really been discussed in a viable manner before the board or before the council. Uh, but we did wanna let you know that it is there. I can't identify the name of the shippers due to a protective order before the Surface Transportation Board, uh, pending motion for a protective order before the Surface Transportation Board. Uh, but I did wanna let the city council know that there are shippers and receivers of goods here in Jersey City that would be inclined to use the Harpsmiths line, should you preserve it, for freight service, which is precisely what the OFA process is to be used for. It is for the continuation of rail service. I want to applaud the city of Jersey City for having the vision to try to save the rail corridor, uh, in question before it did get abandoned and completely decimated. Uh, it has tremendous potential as a passenger corridor. And I will not say that it doesn't have potential as a passenger corridor. Uh, it may have use as a freight corridor once again. And, uh, we would like you to be cognizant of the fact that, uh, shippers and receivers, uh, in, in the city could in fact need access to rail and they could in fact use the Harpsmiths line. We are in support of your OFA and we would like you to vote yes on this. Um, but I have had Mr. Riffen, who is, uh, one of our senior shareholders, and I'd also like to identify Mr. Brian Niskel-
Please speak to the council. I think they know who they are.
Yeah, and, uh, Mr. Yushikoff are all here from CNJ today. We wanted to make sure that you knew that we were very much in support of this. Uh, Mr. Riffen, uh, had some concerns that we also have, which is, uh, we'd like to discuss with you briefly. I'll defer to him. Uh, as you vote yes, and we hope that you do, uh, just be aware that there are certain liabilities that come along with voting yes. And with that, I'll turn the, turn the floor over to Mr. Riffen and thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm James Riffen. I'm from Baltimore, Maryland. You may wonder, why is someone in Baltimore appearing before you tonight? It's because of what it is you're attempting to do. I may or may not have some involvement in the ultimate outcome. Because I may have some involvement, I want to make sure that all of you fully understand what the OFA process is. It is not appropriate to use the OFA process to acquire land for a trail. It is not appropriate to use the OFA process to acquire land for a park. There is only one, and I emphasize one, appropriate use for the OFA process. And that is to foster continued freight rail service. If you acquire a line of railroad via the OFA process and if you in fact use it for continued freight rail service, then it is legally possible to use a portion of whatever right of way you've acquired for other non-freight rail purposes, such as a trail or a park. So trails and parks are possible via the OFA process. But what you need to be acutely aware of is that if the Surface Transportation Board perceives that your primary purpose in acquiring the Harpsmiths line is to use it for a trail or a park or any other public purpose, including light rail, you will be in violation of the board's process. The board does not take kindly to that. There is a case, it's called Issaquah Redmond. It's in Washington. I believe your outside counsel was involved in that case. In that case, a line of a railroad was acquired via the OFA process. It turned out after the fact, it was determined that the reason it was acquired was not to provide continued freight rail service. It was to use it for other than freight rail purposes. The board reopened the proceeding and ordered the reconveyance of that line of railroad back to the railroad. The same can happen in this case. Those are my cautions. I've given you a 10-page letter. It outlines what the OFA process is.
Where did you send this letter, sir?
I sent it to the city council's chambers. UPS tells me it arrived at 11:38 a.m. this morning.
Okay.
I sent 15 copies.
Well, Mr. Horgan's asking me to add it to the record, but you didn't send it to me as the clerk.
I didn't specifically ask that a copy be rendered, delivered to the clerk.
I've been asked to add something to the record that I never got custody of.
Would you like a copy? May I hand you a copy right now? I have plenty of copies. Thank you.
Look, Bob, with all this litigation going on, maybe this should be pulled.
We're in the middle of a public hearing. Please continue, Mr. Riffen.
I might add, for all the other persons in the audience, particularly those who appeared before you in support, if they would like a copy of what I've just handed to the clerk. I have extra copies with me. And after I've finished and we've concluded, if they ask me for a copy, I will provide them with a copy.
Sir, if you could conclude your, conclude your remarks.
I do support your efforts to preserve this rail corridor. I support all efforts to preserve all rail corridors. Once they're lost, it's almost impossible to retrieve them. Approving this ordinance merely authorizes the city to submit an OFA. It does not mean that an OFA will in fact be submitted, nor does it mean that you will in fact acquire this line via the OFA. As I believe it was the first speaker pointed out, it's expected the city will ask the board to set terms and conditions. Once the board sets terms and conditions, the city then has a period of time, typically 10 days, within which to decide whether or not it wishes to acquire the line under those terms and conditions. So all you're doing tonight is permitting the process to move forward. That's a good. I'm not in total agreement with Mr. Horgan regarding the use of the funds, prospective use of your funds, and his argument that you may be in violation of some SEC regulations. I'm not a bond person. I can't address that. I might also point out, pursuant to the board's regulations, anyone can submit an OFA. If more than one OFA is submitted, the railroad, Conrail, has the absolute right to pick whichever offer it chooses to pick. It doesn't have to be the best offer. It's whichever person they choose to deal with. If the city is the only offeror and terms and conditions are set, the city has the absolute right to acquire whatever they've offered to acquire, providing they meet those terms and conditions. If there's another offeror, the railroad determines who they're going to deal with. In this particular case- In this particular case, if the LLCs were to submit their own OFA, Conrail could pick the LLC's OFA as opposed to the city's. So just submitting it doesn't guarantee that you will get what you are attempting to acquire, nor is there any certainty at this point in time that you can acquire what you want under terms and conditions that you're willing to live with. As I point out in my letter, if a rail service is, in fact, instituted, and it needs to be, you will have a considerable amount of truck traffic on your streets, and you need to figure out how you're going to deal with that. In my very last footnote, I've offered you a suggestion. Several weeks ago, Mr. Steve Hyman appeared before you. He's the putative owner of the LLCs. I say putative because they're actually in his wife's name. During his short conversation with you, he made an offer. He suggested you should have an informal get-together and see if you can reach some sort of common ground, settle the controversy. I've been advocating that for nearly a year now. I continue to advocate it. If you want certainty, you need to reach a settlement. Now, I'm aware.
Sir, discussion of settlements are not part of the...
I believe it does, because it's the solution.
Hey, I'm sorry. What's up? Yeah, you have to speak on the ordinance itself.
In conclusion, just before I conclude, Mr. Corrigan made a suggestion, and it struck
me as a pretty good suggestion. It strikes me you're being rushed into making a decision without being fully informed. I have no idea what you know and what you don't know. I know counsel, Mr. Montain, was here, and he's had discussions with you. I have no idea what he told you. I have no idea what he did not tell you. But Mr. Horgan made the suggestion, you might consider tabling your vote on this ordinance for a period of time in order to investigate, acquire more information. If you have any unanswered questions, I think that's a good suggestion.
Thank you.
With that, at some point in time, whenever you decide that it's appropriate, I do believe you should vote to authorize the OFA. I'm a firm believer in making informed decisions. If you are fully informed, then you may make the decision, but you need to be fully informed. Thank you very much for your time. If you have any questions, I'll make myself available to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
All right. Wait, 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 wait. Thank you. May you may move yourself.
I may leave.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
The motion by the council president, seconded by Councilperson Coleman. Close the public hearing. Councilperson Gudjuski.
Aye.
Ramchow.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun. Close.
Just to close.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera. Waterman. Council president.
Aye.
We have a 9-0 vote for the close of the public hearing for final adoption.
Before final adoption, I think we gotta make a couple of things clear. First, the corporation counsel. They bring up the issue that September 8, our caucus meeting, they claim that it's violating the Open Public Meeting Act. Yes or no? Would you make it clear?
No.
No? You sure?
No.
Good. I like you. Now, when he said, "Are you sure?", you said no.
He said no to... Yes, I'm sure.
Yes, you sure?
I'm sure.
Sure. Okay, now, all right.
We are not in violation of the Open Public Meeting Act. We gave sufficient notice of the topic to be discussed, and it was a topic that's covered by the attorney-client privilege.
You're muffling it. He gave, "We gave sufficient notice," he said, of the meeting.
We gave sufficient notice of the topic to be discussed, and the topic is covered by the attorney-client privilege.
Okay, so, okay, we, council goes by, based on your advice or definition for that, okay? So we go with that. Now, next one. They argue that possible violation of the federal security law, considering it funded. Is that true or not? Who's gonna be answered, the BA or corporation counsel?
It's not true.
I'm sorry?
It's not true.
It's not the true? We're not violating any...
Let me see if I can cut to the chase here. Corporation counsel, with regard to the letter and all the materials and information that was presented by Mr. Horgan, do you agree with their assessment in any way, shape, I do not agree. Thank you.
I'm sorry? I can't hear you.
He does not agree with the content of their letter.
Okay.
Okay. That's what you say, right?
In the interest of moving this meeting...
Let's call for the votes.
Councilperson Gudjuski.
Aye.
Yeah, we didn't vote yet.
Councilperson Ramchow.
I abstain.
Councilperson Bajano.
It's in litigation, and it's max of eminent domain. I know what Dan Levin said, but it's still, it's eminent domain as far as I'm concerned. And I believe the city back in 2005 or '07 had a chance to buy this, and they did not. I vote no.
Counselor, I just want to address that one issue about eminent domain. To be clear, as we were explained by our outside counsel, this is a form of federal eminent domain. So you're absolutely right about that, but you should, if you remember, recognizing the record, that the federal court and the STB was clear that this property was illegally transferred to the LLCs and needed to go through the abandonment proceeding. And if it had gone through the appropriate abandonment proceeding, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be here.
But, Jeremy, it's still in litigation.
This is, this is actually one of our theories in litigation. This is asking only that we continue to pursue, this is one of many theories in the litigation that we've been pursuing, and this is asking for the ability to continue to pursue that theory. So this is one of the claims in that litigation.
Okay, councilperson Yun, you were voting, sir.
You know, before I cast my vote, I think our public taxpayers usually have to know that, how much cost will be taxpayer to own the sixth investment. First things...
Counselor, if I just can address that point, because it's an important point, we have no way of knowing that until the STB rules and potentially subsequent courts. As was explained, in an OFA, the STB is gonna, either, either will negotiate, and if we can't reach a resolution, the STB will set the terms for the transfer, and one of those terms will be the price. So it's impossible for us to know today what the price of the transfer is gonna be. And it's one of the main reasons why the assertions made by opposing counsel are, let's say, unripe, because we just don't know how much money's gonna be needed to acquire the property, what the other terms are gonna be. But once we do have a ruling from the STB, should we prevail on any of the theories, this is only one of them, we would have to come back to this body to then get the authority we need to actually acquire the property. This is just another step at this juncture.
Based on your advice, I trust you so much. Based on your advice, I vote for aye.
Councilperson Coleman. Councilperson Rivera.
Hundred percent aye.
Councilperson Waterman. Council president.
I'll just say, no, I don't want you to vote for me. I'll say, we are informed, and moving forward, I vote aye.
City ordinance 14-103 finally adopted, 7-1-1. Voting no, councilperson Bajano abstaining, councilperson Ramchow. Item 4B, city ordinance 14-104. An ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 275, secondhand dealers of the Jersey City Code. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion. Second.
Who made the motion? Councilperson Osborne, seconded by council president. Lavaro to close the public hearing. Councilperson Gudjuski to close. Councilman Ramchow.
Aye.
Bajano. Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
We didn't hear you.
Waterman.
Aye.
Council president.
Not at all.
Aye.
We have a 9-0 vote to close the public hearing for the final adoption of city ordinance 14-104. Item 4B, councilperson Gudjuski. Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Council president.
Aye.
Nine zero for the final adoption of item 4B, city ordinance 14-104. 4C, city ordinance 14-105, is an ordinance of the municipal council of the city of Jersey City, adopting amendments to the Land Development Ordinance, Section 345-10, Environmental Commission for the purposes of expanding the Environmental Commission. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion by the council president, seconded by councilperson Ramchow to close the public hearing. Councilperson Gudjuski.
Aye.
Ramchow.
Aye.
Bajano. Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye.
We have a 9-0 vote to close the public hearing to consider the final adoption of city ordinance 14-105. Councilperson Gudjuski.
Aye.
Ramchow.
Aye.
Bajano. Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman. Lavaro.
Aye.
We have a 9-0 vote for the final adoption of item 4C, city ordinance 14-105. On to item 4D, city ordinance 14-107. An ordinance of the municipal council of the city of Jersey City, adopting amendments to the Ninth and Brunswick redevelopment plan to expand permitted uses, modify parking requirements, and other administrative items. This is a public hearing on this subject ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion by councilman Rivera, seconded by councilman Ramchow. Close the public hearing. Councilperson Gudjuski.
Aye.
Ramchow.
Aye.
Bajano. Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye.
We have a 9-0 vote for the close of the public hearing for final adoption. Councilperson Gudjuski.
Aye.
Ramchow.
Aye.
Bajano. Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Council president.
Aye.
We have a 9-0 vote for the final adoption of item 4D, city ordinance 14-107. On to item 4E. City ordinance 14-108. It's an ordinance of the municipal council of the city of Jersey City, adopting amendments to the Village redevelopment plan to permit apartment buildings on Block 11110. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion. Second.
We have a motion by councilperson Rivera, seconded by the council president. Close the public hearing. Councilperson Gudjuski.
Aye.
Ramchow.
Aye.
Bajano. Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye.
We have a 9-0 vote to close the public hearing to consider the final adoption. Councilperson Gudjuski.
Aye.
Ramchow.
Aye.
Bajano. Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Council president.
Aye.
We have a 9-0 vote for the final adoption of city ordinance 14-108. Item 4E on the agenda.
Motion to table.
One second. We're on to item 4F. City ordinance is, it's ordinance 14-109. An ordinance of the municipal council of the city of Jersey City, adopting amendments to the Land Development Ordinance, supplementary zoning as it pertains to height exceptions for rooftop appurtenances.
Can we, can we motion to table, make a table before the public hearing?
Before the hearing.
This needs to go back and have further discussion.
Mr. Tan.
Yes.
Please have a seat. The council is looking to table this. You have, is this a motion, councilperson?
Yeah, a motion.
We have a motion to table item 4F, city ordinance 14-109, prior to the close of the public hearing.
Yeah.
The motion is by councilperson Osborne, seconded by? The president. Council president Lavaro on the motion. Councilperson Gudjuski. Ramchow.
Aye.
Bajano. Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman. Council president.
Aye.
The item is tabled.
Excuse me, council president, can you just explain that if we table this, how it comes back after corrections have been made or additions or whatever?
Sure. So if any modifications are made, then we could untable it, but we'd have to advertise the public hearing in advance so that Mr. Tan or anyone else who wanted to speak on it can come and be notified that it'd be untabled. We would have to give it, and Robert Byrne can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe seven days' notice on the advertisement, and then untable it, and then take a public, another, take a public hearing and then consider it for a vote.
So it can be brought back in the next council meeting?
No.
No? Okay.
No, this could come back in a different iteration. It could come back as a new ordinance in two weeks with some changes, but if the council...
If it has changes.
If the council decides that in two weeks it wants to move forward with this ordinance, I would have to advertise it for a public hearing for the second meeting in October. It's been advertised for a public hearing for tonight. So basically, what we're doing now is taking it back to step zero.
That's, just to clarify, because we keep going through this, it's only if it's modifying, right? We could still advertise the public hearing and the ordinance, and it probably will be modified. And I, and it probably will be modified, so this will probably go back to?
But I was saying, I would need, if this table tonight, I would need some direction from the council at a council meeting.
Right.
To advertise it, which presumably would be the next meeting for a public hearing down the line, so it can come back new, or it could be this ordinance, it's up to, it's up to the council. Okay? Moving forward, item, to item four G. Actually, uh, four G, council members.
I'm sorry, Robert, if I can just?
Four G, we are gonna table prior to the close of the public hearing.
Yeah, Mr. Tan, I know you have questions, Pam?
He's on his speaker's list.
I know, but he, he obviously has concerns about this. Pam, can you just, um, speak with Mr. Tan?
All right.
Okay, let's proceed.
All right, uh, can I have a motion to table four G prior to the close of the public hearing? This is the Tide Water Basin.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion by council president Lavaro, seconded by counselperson Ramchow. And this is to table item four G, city ordinance fourteen one hundred ten, prior to the close of the public hearing. Counselperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ramchow.
Aye.
Bajano. Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye.
So this ordinance has been tabled, item four G has been tabled. Council members, you voted earlier in the meeting to, in effect, replace that ordinance, having me produce the other. Item four H, for, item four H, city ordinance fourteen one hundred eleven. Is an ordinance approving a twenty-year tax exemption.
Can I just, um, before you proceed, I just wanna say thank you, Jeff, Kristen, for coming out tonight. Thanks for your patience. No, on the planning issues.
Item four H, city ordinance fourteen one hundred eleven, an ordinance approving a twenty-year tax exemption. For an emerging market residential condominium project to be constructed by Community Asset Preservation Alliance of Jersey City Number Four Urban Renewal LLC, an urban renewal entity. Pursuant to the long-term tax exemption law, New Jersey statutes annotated forty A colon twenty dash one at SEC. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard? Mrs. Ballser.
Uh, yes, first of all, where is this, please?
What was the question?
Where is this, please?
Three twenty-six Pacific Avenue.
Pacific Avenue, okay. So this is the twenty, is this a via or not? Or this is the twenty years, basic one, um, mayor's full of ID, a certain community should have a certain development, okay? So it's a twenty-year, okay. What will they be paying in taxes and what would it be paying, um, if it did not receive an abatement?
I'm sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Conventional tax eighty-one thousand, five hundred ninety-two dollars.
Eighty-one thousand?
Eighty-one thousand.
Okay, and what would it pay?
Conventional tax, if they pay.
A conventional, and what's the abatement tax?
Thirty-four thousand.
Thirty-four thousand. Do you know what its assessed valuation would be? If it was like, uh, what would its assessed valuation be if the county were to cede this? Right now, the county will not cede this because it's an abated property and it's not part of the tax roll. But if it was not abated and it'll be part of the county's tax roll, what would its value be on the, on the county's tax roll? Cause a third of the city is now tax-abated and it's not only the county's tax roll. It's close to a third, it's not quite a third.
It's a church.
Oh, it's a church?
It's a church building.
It's a church building?
Yes.
But it's a church building that's been, um, vacated and now it's turned into housing? Okay.
Yeah.
It would be nice for the public to know what is the ratable of, of a building that's getting an abatement, because the city is not worth, it's less than six billion dollars. When rebauled happened twenty-six years ago, we were worth close to seven billion dollars. We, and that's why taxes are so high because of that. It would be nice to know what its ratable base would be if it did not have an abatement, because that's why taxes are high. These properties that have an abatement, whether it is affordable or whether it is market rate, they're invisible in the eyes of the county when it strikes the budget. They're not seen. And that's to me the reason why our taxes are so, are so, are high. Um, there are towns in Jersey, the Sea Caucus does not give an abatement and they have a higher ratable base, so therefore they have a lower tax rate. Their taxes, I believe the last time I saw it was like in the thirties, like thirty-four dollars per thousand. So here we are, and that's, that's like the three budgets, not just the one. Our taxes are really high because we have too many of these properties like this that are quite invisible. And it doesn't help the people in Jersey City who lives in that community that pay full taxes and are on lien. So every time I hear how affordable housing is great for the community, it doesn't help the people who are on lien, who don't have affordable taxes. So I'm, I'm against this because we only selectively allow certain communities and certain areas to survive, and we're ignoring twenty-three hundred people in Jersey City that are in tax lien. They do not benefit from any abatement you give them. Thank you.
In relationship to the ordinance, um, I've?
Who you are, Kabili?
Oh, I'm sorry, Kabili, tell you, I'm nineteen Virginia Avenue. I have continuously recommended, and I think it's still necessary, that if we do some kind of, uh, public conference, a public session on evaluating, um, the affordable housing projects and those projects that are not affordable housing projects. Um, a city like ours, in fact, in America, any city, affordable housing is a quality thing and a good thing. And it started with Mayor Cunningham in bringing Goldman Sachs on Martin Luther King Drive. Uh, my only concern would be two things. One, have we hired any new monitors, uh, to go out and assess these properties? Um, because the number of people we have had in the past is not sufficient for the amount of properties that we have on the tax roll. And it's not fair to them to have a responsibility to do this and not have the essential manpower. So I just, through you, Mr. President, to the business administrator, have we hired any new compliance officers or do we plan to hire any new compliance officers in regards to these abated properties?
Um, it's not my understanding that there's new, any new hires in that office. I'm not sure, what is the staffing level for that office right now?
They have approximately, I think, five staff members right now. Uh, there has been a request for additional staff members. Uh, we, you know, there's nothing though currently in the pipeline.
Point is well taken.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. BA.
One second, please. Sorry about that. Okay, we have no public speakers to close public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion by counsel, I think, seconded by councilman Ramchow. Close the public hearing, counselperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ramchow.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne. Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Counsel president.
Aye.
Close the public hearing, nine zero. Counselperson Gajewski for final adoption.
Aye.
Ramchow.
Aye.
Bajano. Yun.
Well, this is the first time I see that the middle-income household housing, you know, this council looking for twenty years of tax abatement. And when I look at that area, deserve to have a tax abatement twenty years. And I'm so glad that they see that, yeah, they come up, build some housing units for the middle-income household in Jersey City. So I say aye.
Counsel? Counselperson Osborne.
About time to have a for middle-income household.
Counselperson Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Yeah, I vote aye.
We have a nine zero vote for the final adoption of item four H, city ordinance fourteen one hundred eleven.
Robert, if I may?
The public hearing has been closed.
I understand. I just wanna thank the council. Uh, I'm Mark Monley, I'm the chief investment officer for New Jersey Community Capital, which is the sponsor for the AME church renovation, as we are for the All Saints School renovation. Thank you for your attention. It will be the first market rate project in that area, and we greatly appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
There you go. Council members, city ordinance fourteen one hundred twelve. It was a five-year tax exemption for five thirty-two Jersey Avenue. Uh, we had in Tuesday's newspaper, uh, a good number of ads, six in total, that were supposed to be in full in the summary ad. The Jersey Journal neglected to advertise this ordinance. So I need a, a motion instructing me to advertise this ordinance for the next meeting on October eighth, it was not advertised.
Motion.
Second.
We have, who made the motion?
Rivera.
Counselperson Rivera, seconded by counselperson Ramchow.
Correct.
Counselperson Gajewski on the motion.
Aye.
Ramchow.
Aye.
Bajano. Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman. Counsel president.
Aye.
Okay, you'll see this ordinance on the next agenda. Continuing, council members. Item fourteen one hun, excuse me, item four J, item fourteen, uh, ordinance fourteen one hundred thirteen. Is an ordinance supplementing chapter three thirty-two vehicles and traffic.
Robert, before we continue?
Article three, parking.
Robert, I'm sorry, before you continue, I just wanna make sure, on that last ordinance, did we inform the applicant?
Yes, the applicant was, was sent in.
Great.
That was Mr. Harrington's client.
Okay.
Article three, parking, standing and stopping in article nine, parking for the disabled of the Jersey City Code designating a reserved parking space at twenty-five Carlton Avenue, thirteen Irving Street, one eighteen Manhattan Avenue, nineteen McDougal Street, twenty-nine and a half Sherman Place, one thirty-three Thorn Street, three thirty-one York Street, and four Wilkinson Avenue, and revealing a reserved parking space at one thirteen Colden Street, one twenty-one Manhattan Avenue, and thirty-five Wegman Parkway. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion by the council president, seconded by counselperson Ramchow to close the public hearing. Counselperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ramchow.
Aye.
Bajano. Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman. Counsel president.
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote for the close of the public hearing. For final adoption, counselperson Gajewski. Ramchow.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera. Waterman. Counsel president.
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote for the final adoption of city ordinance fourteen one hundred thirteen, item four J. Can you believe it keeps on going to item four K, city ordinance fourteen one fourteen, an ordinance supplementing chapter three thirty-two vehicles and traffic. Article three, parking, standing and stopping of the Jersey City Code. Amending section three thirty-two dash twenty-four, no parking certain hours, designating both sides of Newark Avenue from Erie Street to Grove Street, three P M. to midnight Monday through Thursday and three P M. Friday through midnight as new Sunday, excuse me, midnight Sunday as new parking. This is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Here.
Please say your name.
My name is Seah Lim Kim, from Tender, Seah Lim, S.E.A.H.
S.E.H.
S.E.A.H. Last name is L, well, actually, middle name is L.I.M., last name is K.I.M.
Lim Kim.
Yes.
Okay, and you're speaking on these, on this ordinance?
Yes, um, so I'm, uh, from Tender Shit Farm on one thirty-eight Newark Avenue. Today I am here also representing fifteen other businesses on Newark Avenue. Um, so, okay, let me just read this. Tender Shit Farm has been serving downtown Jersey City and surrounding residents since two thousand and one. Many of the other businesses on this block have also been serving for a great number of years. The street closing of Newark Avenue has negatively impacted our businesses, and we strongly oppose the idea of having this continued. Our customers come from both local and distant areas. Many of them drive, park their car on Newark Avenue, and support us by giving us business, not only to our store, but to, to also other businesses as well. Now that the street is closed to traffic and parking, these customers hesitate to make a trip to Newark Avenue. Since the street closure, we've seen at least fifteen percent decrease in sales. Most of the businesses on this block are mom and pop stores with families running the show. Our lives depend on it, and we cannot take any chance in losing what we have built so hard until now. Furthermore, in order to keep the business running, we need to receive deliveries. For Tender Shit Farm, we receive at least three to four deliveries throughout the day. Closing, street closing has given us no choice but to transport hundreds of large heavy boxes of products from at least a block away all by hand. It has inconvenienced not only our employees, but it has also created more traffic jam on those other streets that we have to unload our deliveries. All the businesses, all the business owners in Newark Avenue and nearby residents want this area to be lively and booming as it once used to be. We support the idea of improvement and progress. However, street closure on Newark Avenue has already shown us the opposite. Downtown Newark Avenue is one of the main streets of downtown Jersey City with many businesses needing traffic in order to flourish. What we truly need is better access to this area by people from close and afar. We need flowing traffic and more tra, parking spaces. Closing the street will only limit the area from growing bigger. Closing the street will only limit the area from growing bigger. I have received signatures from businesses on Newark Avenue and residents nearby of support to reopen Newark Avenue and opposing the street closure.
Thank you.
I have, um, the signatures today. Can I?
Yeah, give it to the council person.
Wait, have someone make copies of that? No, I guess not.
Hey, this is a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
Who made the motion?
Me.
Ma'am Coleman.
Oh.
Councilperson Coleman makes the motion, seconded by councilperson Ramchow. Close the public hearing. Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ramchow.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
LeVarah.
I forgot my call.
Close, council president, thank you. We have a nine zero vote to close. Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ramchow.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yoon.
Aye.
Yoon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Um, I just want to address, um, the concerns that you brought up and just to kind of, just to give, huh, I'm sorry?
Is it October?
Oh, oh, this is the close? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's not. It, this is.
It's the vote. Oh, this is the vote. I'm sorry.
Wow, what am I thinking? Okay, let me try again. Um, so, just to kind of explain to you what this is and what it's not, um, we, when we adopted the pilot program, which will end in October, this should have been done at the same time. So, right now, what they're doing is putting up emergency no parking. So this is kind of in conjunction with that. Um, we made pretty clear that the criteria of the pilot plan is that there has to be increased business, um, that the, the businesses have to benefit from it. And so, at the end, you know, at, over the next month or so, uh, as we bring the analysis to completion, if it's not beneficial to the businesses, we're not going to renew it. And at that point, we would go back and undo this.
But what about until then?
No, 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 not, sorry, it's not a, it's not a back and forth.
It's already, this is a cleanup thing, is what I'm trying to say. So this is, this is a cleanup thing. The pilot program ends in October, and we will make an, we'll make a judgment based on the results of the pilot at that point.
Okay, councilperson Coleman.
And I didn't vote aye.
I'm sorry, councilperson.
I do vote aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Uh, I'm gonna have to, um, just say that this is gonna bring us the results of closing down the block anyway. And so, all of this, the closing of the block and the parking, will either stay or go, depending on the results from you guys, from the businesses. And that will be over in October. So we'll know in October if this is gonna continue. And with that, I have to vote aye on this because we've already voted aye on closing the block down. So I have to vote aye on this. However, it will be reviewed, and, and, and councilwoman Osborne will bring back the results, and we'll make a determination at that time of whether it's gonna continue or it's gonna be completed. So with that, I vote aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
I vote aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Ms. Kim, I know, I can see your concern, but just like councilwoman, um, Coleman and councilwoman Osborne say, this is really just like, our, October, it ends the street closing, and they will reevaluate it, and I would encourage you to continue to get your signatures, and make sure that we have them before we open the street back up again, all right, or close it, whatever we do. With that, I vote aye.
Council president.
I vote aye.
We have a nine zero vote for the final adoption of item four K, city ordinance fourteen one hundred fourteen.
We're almost there, folks.
City ordinance fourteen one hundred fifteen is item four L. It's a traffic ordinance, an ordinance supplementing chapter three thirty-two vehicles and traffic, article two, traffic regulations, amending section three thirty-two dash five, one-way streets of the Jersey City Code, repealing Barrow Street is a one-way south from Newark Avenue to Columbus Drive. This is a public hearing. On the ordinance, are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion by councilperson Rivera, seconded by councilperson Ramchow, to close the public hearing. Councilperson Gajewski. Ramchow.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yoon.
Aye.
Osborne.
She stepped away.
Stepped away.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Council president.
Aye.
We have an eight zero vote to close the public hearing. For final adoption, councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ramchow.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yoon.
Aye.
Osborne.
That's her, she stepped away.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman. Council president.
Aye.
With councilwoman Osborne out of the room, we have an eight zero vote for item four L, city ordinance fourteen one hundred fifteen. Item four M, city ordinance fourteen one hundred sixteen. It's an ordinance supplementing chapter three thirty-two vehicles and traffic, article two, traffic regulations, section three thirty-two dash nine, stop intersections of the Jersey City Code, repealing the intersections of Barrow Street and York Street, Cole Street and Seventh Street, Eighth Street and Brunswick Street, Eighth Street and Mamet Street, First Street and Erie Street, Jersey Avenue and Eighth Street, Jersey Avenue and Ninth Street, Mamet Street and Seventh Street, Morgan Street and Warren Street, Morris Street and Washington Street, Ninth Street and Brunswick Street, Pavonia Avenue and Brunswick Street, Second Street and Brunswick Street, Sussex Street and Washington Street, Tenth Street and Jersey Avenue, West Hamilton Place and Ninth Street, and New York Street and Jersey Avenue as a stop intersection, designating intersection of Erie Street and Pavonia as a stop intersection and designating intersection of Barrow Street and New York Street, Brunswick Street and Second Street, Brunswick Street and Eighth Street, Brunswick Street and Ninth Street, Brunswick Street and Pavonia Avenue, Cole Street and Seventh Street, Division Street and Eighth Street. Eighth Street and Mamet Street, Eighth Street and Jersey Avenue, Eighth Street and McWilliams Place, Erie Street and First Street, Jersey Avenue and New York Street, Jersey Avenue and Ninth Street, Jersey Avenue and Tenth Street, Mamet Street and Seventh Street, Morgan Street and Warren Street, Morris Street and Washington Street, Ninth Street and West Hamilton Place, Sussex Street and Washington Street as a multi-way stop intersection. This is a public hearing. On the ordinance, are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion by councilperson Coleman. Um, Kansas. We have a motion by councilperson Coleman, seconded by, I'm sorry. Who made the second to the motion?
Councilman Ramchow.
Councilperson Ramchow, to close the public hearing. Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ramchow.
Aye.
Bajano.
No.
This is to close.
Want to close?
What?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yoon. Yoon, yoon. Yoon. Yoon.
Yes.
Osborne. Councilperson Osborne is still out of the room. Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
He stepped away.
Waterman.
Aye.
President.
Aye.
We have a seven zero vote to close the public hearing. For final adoption, councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ramchow.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yoon.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne is not here. Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera is still out of the room. Councilperson Waterman. Council president.
Yeah, just, just to clarify, so, you're repealing some and designating some.
Thank you. All right, we have councilpersons Osborne and Rivera out of the room. We have a seven zero vote.
Yeah, move on.
Item four N, city ordinance fourteen one hundred seventeen, is an ordinance amending chapter three administration of government, article eleven, Department of Public Safety, subarticle two, Division of Fire and Emergency Services, article seventeen, fire safety manager, and chapter one sixty, fees and charges of the Jersey City Municipal Code. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion by councilperson Coleman, seconded by councilperson Ramchow. Close the public hearing. Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ramchow.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yoon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Step, she stepped away.
Stepped away.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Council president.
Aye.
We have a seven zero vote to close the public hearing. For the final adoption of city ordinance fourteen one hundred seventeen, councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ramchow.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye, and Mike and Jerry can go home after the next one.
Yoon.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
LeVarah.
Aye.
We have a seven zero vote with councilpersons Osborne and Rivera out of the room.
Yeah, move on.
They're voting.
Cap, can you, um, can you round the?
Four O, city ordinance fourteen one hundred eighteen. It's an ordinance amending and supplementing chapter three, administration of government, article eighteen, fire safety manager, mandating the use of a fire safety manager in the city of Jersey City for high-rise buildings. This is a public hearing. On this subject ordinance, are there any members of the public wishing to be heard? Councilperson.
Second.
I'm sorry?
Motion by Ramchow, seconded by the council president.
Motion by councilperson Ramchow, seconded by council.
We got, I heard the second, I didn't hear you, councilperson Ramchow. To close the public hearing, councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ramchow.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
He's, he's stepped away.
He's still absent, councilperson Coleman.
Still away.
Okay. Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
Council president.
Aye.
We have an eight zero vote to close the public hearing. For final adoption, councilperson Gajewski. Ramchow.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yoon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Council president.
Uh, gentlemen, can I ask you one question? I, I, I'm serious, I'm not, uh, I'm not joking, just one question. Oh, you're not gonna come forward?
Come forward.
The cheap seats, you're gonna. Sorry, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I'm de, I'm definitely gonna vote for it, so I just, I just wanna, what's the rollout with regard to notifying the, um, the buildings and so forth about this requirement? What's the?
On the record, Jerry.
What's the plan? So this ordinance requires a fire safety manager, right?
You were here all night, all night, you were hoping someone.
We were hoping somebody asked a question. Uh, this, this has already been on the books. The only change in this ordinance is now we've tightened up the way the fire safety managers are trained, and we certify, uh, all the high-rise buildings in the city, notice in operation, they all have high-rise managers in effect as we speak.
I think it'd be notified of these changes to their qualifications, I guess, then?
The, the fire official will make sure to notify of the updated changes on the training and the recertification.
I'm sorry.
The fire official will notify all the buildings of the changes in the recertification and the training.
Right, that'll be by mail, or, I'm just trying to get, how, how will it be done? How will the notification be completed?
When?
We'll visit each building.
We'll visit them personally.
And personally, visit the high-rise managers, give them the information, and give them the ordinance.
Do you need a name for the record?
Dennis Nuber, N-U-B-E-R.
Dennis, I hope you have Mike with you.
N-U-B-E-R.
I, I think we had just a business administrator, um, with, which we should probably follow up on, the requirement on twenty-four-seven security. Who's, who's that? So, I, I believe there was a mailer done to those folks, right? So we could probably do something similar, I guess, right? Just, uh, I mean, this is your, your execution, how you do that, but, uh, just want to make sure that it's, um, executed.
It will be.
So, yeah, all right, gentlemen. Thank you for waiting so long, Mike, Mr. Nuber, Jerry.
Good night.
I vote aye. And, uh, councilman Rivera just returned.
Our last second reading ordinance.
Robert, councilman Rivera just returned.
I've seen that. We'll catch he and councilperson Osborne up at the same time.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's move on.
Item four P, city ordinance fourteen one hundred nineteen, is an ordinance supplementing chapter three thirty-two vehicles and traffic, article two, traffic regulations, amending section three thirty-two dash five, one-way streets of the Jersey City Code, repealing Barrow Street is a one-way south from Newark Avenue to Columbus Drive. This is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion by the council president, seconded by councilperson Ramchow. Close the public hearing. Council president Gajewski.
Aye.
Ramchow.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Council president.
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote to close the public hearing. For final adoption, councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ramchow.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yoon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Waterman.
Aye.
Council president.
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote for the final adoption of city ordinance fourteen one hundred nineteen, item four P. Council members. Councilperson Osborne, you were absent for the vote on item four L, fourteen one hundred fifteen.
Aye.
Final adopted vote for item four L, fourteen one hundred fifteen, is nine zero. Councilpersons Osborne and Rivera, you missed the vote on item four M, city ordinance fourteen one hundred sixteen. Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote for the final adoption of item four M, city ordinance fourteen one hundred sixteen. Councilpersons Osborne and Rivera, you missed the vote on four N, fourteen one seventeen. Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote for the final adoption of item four N, fourteen one hundred seventeen. We have a nine zero vote for the final adoption of item 4N, 14-117. Counsel person Rivera, you missed the vote on 4O, 14-118.
Aye.
Nine zero vote for the vote, adopted vote of 4O, city ordinance 14-119. And you voted on 14-100, actually that was 14-118. 14-119 has everybody. That's the end of the second reading. Next time we have that many second reading ordinances on a meeting.
I just wanna applaud you, Robert.
Crackered.
Between the budget and all those second readings, good job, great job.
Hey, council members, we can breeze through the rest of this evening, I believe. Jamie Vasquez is not here, Yvonne Ballser is stuck around.
Yvonne Ballser, I want to talk about an incident concerning Park Avenue and Park Street. I know from a reliable source that the fire department responded to 122, uh, Park Avenue, but they gotta be on, a school is there, I think it's a charter school there, but they went to Park Street, upward the hill. And this, uh, apparently when the school alarms go off, the fire department, it's required to respond to it. Luckily, it was absolutely no problem at all, they found out it was downtown. I'm not gonna mention the person who told me this, because I don't wanna get anybody in trouble, but the bottom line is, that could have been very serious. I don't know why we are allowing developers to rename streets. I, I don't see the reason why. They're getting so many things from the city in terms of abatements, they're not putting enough parking, which I think they should do, and they're coming in here with silly names, and it is, it is a real danger. And I think you should pass an ordinance immediately, give them a list of names to use in parallel, so not to have this problem. So, I'm referring to the charter school that is downtown, I think it's the Boys and Girls Club down here, that's the one that had the problem, and the, and the fire department did not show up. So I'm only gonna leave that, you know, I'm not gonna make any more comments about it, but please go through in terms of the name change.
Yvonne, Yvonne, I couldn't agree with you more. I'm going to make sure that that happens very fast, because, uh, the safetiness, the safety of the constituents of Jersey City is at stake, especially when you have three streets named the same, it's totally uncalled for.
Yeah, and, and, yeah. I mean, there, there are a lot of people that have served our country, lost lives, I think it's very appropriate, you know, we could name streets after people coming back from these wars, especially, you know, natives.
Ms. Vaughn, let me just, um, give you some more information. There is a committee, a renaming street committee, and we do have a list of names that streets will be named after, um, it will come to the council maybe about the next go-round or, or after that, but that is in place, and not only that, when we took office, 18th Park was already in existence, we haven't concerned about that, but we are working with, um, the planning department to see how we can change the name. We are very, we are, that is on our radar.
Okay, well, if you're gonna do that, please remember that we also lost Henderson Street, which was a, a mayor of Jersey City, as well as a pottery factory, I really wish we could have a name for him again, to me it's sad. The other thing I have, I have a question.
Ms. Vaughn.
Wait, wait, everyone's in, what?
I just wanted to tell her that they don't, they don't rename streets anymore unless there's an error. Ms. Waterman put in, uh, legislation that only allows you to dedicate a street.
I understand.
And you have to fill out a whole application and get 50 community members to sign, and so there's no more changing the name of the street.
I understand, but we lost the street of a very famous person who had a pottery factory, the Henderson Brothers, who was also a mayor, and that won international awards, and then we took the street, the name from him, and we lost that, and it's gone forever, I'm trying to say. Um, the other thing I wanna answer is that, I'm listening very intently to a conversation about, uh, the spur of, in terms of this new freight rail, and my question to you is that, where would the spur be at? Because downtown, where would you have a, I'm just curious, that was not really mentioned when people talked about this park, so where would you have a freight train spur in Jersey City since this has been adopted?
Corporate counsel, could you answer that?
On top of the bank.
Yvonne, it's never gonna happen, so I wouldn't even worry about it.
No, the, from what I understand, it's gonna be just a spur someplace, which means it's like a train someplace, so, I'm just, I wanna know.
This is coming out of your time, you have 45 seconds.
And the mic's not even working, too.
Yeah, uh, so, it's hard to say what the STP is gonna require, but if they do require some sort of immediate rail line, they may just require an investigation into feasibility, but if they require some sort of immediate, uh, rail, uh, action, then we would look at some sort of, uh, uh, transload or some sort of connectivity to the main line, and so, it would not be able to go up on top of the elevated portions right now, because as you know, the bridges and trussels have been removed, so that is a much larger undertaking to put up bridges and trussels and that type of thing, so.
I, okay.
You can sum up, please don't interrupt Mrs. Ballser, Mrs. Ballser is summing up.
Well, it'd be nice if the city council at, at some time soon, probably for the years out, would please have a drawing, because you voted on something, and I'm not gonna have an opinion when I realized Brett Shumel was mayor and he said no when Conroy came from the beginning, and I'd like to know, because that's a densely packed area, if you had to have a freight line and you have live development downtown, could you please let the public know where it is? That's all I'm gonna say, thank you very much.
And Amelia. You hails to. If your name's on the speakers list, there's empty seats in the front, so we can.
Do I give my name and address? You've got my name, but 92 Mercer Street. Uh, I just wanted to make some comments about, uh, an ordinance that was tabled tonight, the, uh, ordinance referring to, uh, the adoption of amendments to the Tidewater Basin redevelopment plan.
You do know that ordinance will be the subject of a public hearing two weeks from tomorrow?
I'm, I'm, I'm aware of that. No, I, I won't be here, that's why I'd particularly like to make my comments now, I can't be at that meeting. Um, a redevelopment plan gives a lot of thought to appropriate development, uh, the correct height and density to fit in with the existing neighborhood. What's the point in drawing up such a plan if it's changed the moment that the economic climate, um, changes to make it profitable for a developer to exceed those restrictions? I would have attended the planning board meeting to discuss the, uh, fields development on Van Voorst Street at the center of this effort to change the Tidewater Development Plan, but didn't know about it. But here's a recent timeline of that development. As recently as last summer, the developer drove perimeter pilings for the previously approved six-floor project. Then they acquired the two adjoining parcels of land. The deed for the adjoining lot shows that it's subject to an easement for a water main. I can't, you know, would you mind?
I don't know.
The developer then used the fact that this lot can't be fully developed to justify nine additional floors at the original site. This is sheer opportunism. Sorry, don't mean to deafen you. The give-back to the community, a donation for a park several blocks away, doesn't begin to compensate the people most adversely affected by a 15-story building, which is to say those that have homes very close to the, to the development. The side of Sussex, um, the side of Sussex Street on the block next to the projected building, which faces south, will lose sunshine for a significant part of the day. It's those, those who own homes nearby who will also feel the impact of a switch in the development plan to allow restaurants and bars nearby. It's they who will be disturbed by noise, not anyone over by the park. Most important, it's the closest residents who will also be most disturbed by the dust, noise, and most significantly, vibration from the pilings necessary to support a 15-story building. What of the potential damage caused by pile driving to the fabric of old buildings in an historic neighborhood? The closest house is just on the other side of Van Voorst Street, well under 100 feet away. These are old fragile buildings. The developer should be required to indemnify the nearby homeowners for potential damage to their homes. To say that this development is a benefit to the community is a sham. It's all about profit and changing the development plan for the developer, saluted with some, um, token give-backs or inducements via the neighborhood association. Thank you very much. Sorry to shudder you.
City council, I wanna thank you for, um, modifying the speed bumps, uh, trying to reduce the height of it, because, uh, they're monsters out there, and, uh, I, I support speed bumps, especially around schools, and I would go further to say around senior citizen buildings, uh, that would be proper, but we need the proper height, the reflectors, all that, because many of the bumps that are out there, or humps, uh, still do not have markings as far as, uh, reflectors or even those, uh, chevrons, yellow, um, markings. Uh, so I wanted to put, just put that out there, uh, the two cents for that, um, I know a number of people who are suffering car damage, and not just from speeding, but just hitting these huge mounds. I wanna thank the city council for supporting CAS budget, uh, so we could finish out the year 2014. We have a number of, uh, great programs coming up. I want to invite the council to our 37th anniversary, which is scheduled for Saturday, October 11th at 8:00 P.M. at Miller Branch Library. That's 37 years of providing, uh, cultural arts and educational programs to the city, and that, uh, very rich history. I also wanna comment and make this clear, too, uh, that the community awareness series, um, follows framework, all framework, uh, due process, protocol, procedures, as it has been for 37 years, and the fact is, is that we do not make, set those guidelines up, we follow them. We've had to follow them, not just here, uh, with the public library, but also when we receive special grants from, uh, the state, New Jersey State Council of the Arts, or CDBG, or Hudson County Cultural Affairs, each one of them had their own set of procedures which we followed. Um, again, we do not set that, we follow, uh, the framework that's given to us, and we've had, we've been doing that, that for 37 years, and that's, I wanna make that clear. Um, also, uh, I'd like to read into the record, uh, one of the support letters we received from really a wonderful man who's supported this program wholeheartedly, and that is the, uh, late, great, uh, Congressman Donald Payne Senior. And he writes, "It is my pleasure to write this letter of support for the Community Awareness Series of the Jersey City Free Public Library. The Community Awareness Series is a multicultural center that has continued to provide high-quality cultural and educational artists for Jersey City residents for more than 30 years. The Community Awareness Series provides safe, a safe environment for young children, young adults, and senior citizens to enjoy quality cultural arts events and outstanding educational programs in their community. Therefore, I join with other elected officials, community leaders, community organizations, and residents in support of adequate funding for the continued operation of the Community Awareness Series. Sincerely, Donald M. Payne, Member of Congress." That's one of many, many, many letters that we have in our files and that we have distributed, um, to the council and to the community at large, and that also, I wanna mention that on October 18th, uh, at Five Corners Library, we will be celebrating Filipino Heritage and Cultural Month with the PACAO organization, and we'd like to invite you there also. Thank you very much for your support.
Steve Pinkney.
Thank you.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
I'm also here in support of CAS, as always. For the last 25 years, I've been, I'm probably the second longest person dealing with that program, and I too wanna thank the council for the actions. I've been getting very positive news about the continuation of the program. I was very concerned, I sent you all emails saying, "We don't know whether or not we're going to be able to do our 37th anniversary, we don't know if we're gonna be able to do our Kwanzaa, our Martin Luther King Day." This is the, 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 uh, high point of our year, and so, it was good news, you know, to, to hear that money's being put in place, and, and it was also equally good news to know that, um, the problem that, that there's no liaison, uh, that has been established as a point person for CAS, their voucher system and all of the administrative things, uh, because, uh, the one who was is no longer, and the director doesn't have time to deal with a huge amount of work that comes through from CAS. So, again, you know, it, it was, uh, my pleasure and an honor to hear that, you know, Councilman Rivera, Chico, and, um, Frank Gajewski got together and, and were able to, to put together some kind of a, a, a thought product, uh, a process to help us alleviate that difficulty. It's, it's been really difficult. We've got, uh, uh, young people, uh, who worked for the program, who have not gotten paid those vouchers since June, um, and if you're a young person, I don't know if anybody else is, to not get a paycheck because of something that we didn't anticipate was, it, it's extreme hardship. Um, in order to run, this is a department of the public library, it's not just the program, it's a department, and if, um, you were able to attend, uh, the cultural festival, you see the kind of work that we put together, it's, it's high quality. I don't think in Jersey City there's any 37-year-old organization that's still doing it. I, I, I think it's one of a kind. I think that there's, there's been talk that somehow I, I was in disagreement with Dawud. Dawud is my friend, um, and my mentor, and that's not ever gonna happen. Um, so, I, I, I appreciate the communication, and, and we need to communicate. Dawud's spoken to a number of you individually, um, and, and we need to keep the communication going, because we are your program. This is the city's program, and it's the best damn program you got, and we've seen the African-American museum diminish to almost nothing. You know, it's good that the Bethune Center is on the rise, but it's bad that there are very few programs of this caliber in the black community that continue on a day-to-day basis, and, and really with one person. Now we have Greg Smith, you know, um, we don't have a 25-year person anymore, we have somebody who's, who's intelligent and, and, and cooperative, and willing to do whatever it is to make this city look great. So we are yours, and let's, you know, become more communicative to each other, uh, because, you know, I got three jobs, I, just like you guys, I'm a little worn out, too, and, uh, I, I don't wanna come here to speak to you, I'd like to just be able to talk to you in meetings and, and resolve issues. Have a good night.
Thank you.
George Miller.
George Miller, 154 Sussex Street. Thank you very much for your time, I know it's been a long, long night, so, uh, I'll make it as brief as I can, those seats are getting quite hard, so I'm gonna get out of here, too. So, I wanna talk about the Tidewater Basin redevelopment project that, uh, my friend here, Hugh, has also discussed, uh, you'll be voting on it, I guess, in a couple of weeks, um, I believe it's gonna be October 8th. Um, we basically understand that the development project on Van Voorst Street that's being put in there is gonna be a 15-story tower. It's currently, uh, as we understand it, zoned for six stories, uh, so why are we moving forward with an amendment? Why are we making this change? Well, as we understand it from the presentations given to us by the developer, uh, they can give us certain benefits, uh, the community can gain benefits from this by putting a 15-story tower. Unfortunately, um, we don't agree with these benefits, we don't think they're anything substantial to the benefit of the, uh, community, and, uh, if I can just go through a couple of them, um, I'll just start right away. One of them, which is the water main construction easement, uh, so, one of the benefits is that this developer will give us an easement through the property in order to build a water main. It's fantastic. You already have an easement. I have a deed right here. Says Jersey City already has an easement on that property, there's no need to say that we need to negotiate that away, that is not a benefit, we already have easement, I can provide this to the city clerk afterwards. A second issue is basically a pedestrian walkway down Morris Street. That's wonderful, uh, in order to lead over to the Gulf Cove, uh, access from Paul's Hook over to Gulf Cove. There already is a walkway there, it's along the light rail system. Now the new walkway that they were proposing would be very pretty. I mean, I have to say, I was really impressed with the drawings, it was quite nice, maybe you have even seen them already, it looks very, very substantial, um, but the neighbors that live there, um, already have a walkway, don't want a pretty new walkway if it means that they have trade-off to a 15-story tower looming over their homes. Now we have to remember, it's a very small street there, this is in Columbus Avenue, this isn't, uh, one of the major throughways, Van Voorst is 50, 60 feet across, maybe at the most, uh, it's a very small street, and you'll have 15-story towers, even if they are setback, you have 15-story towers looming over historic district. Again, remember, this is not zoned for 15 stories, this is a decision the city is making to gain benefits. And I'll get into much more when I have more time later on at the hearing in a couple of weeks, more as to what the benefits, or benefits really aren't, uh, to the community that lives there. Final point I wanna make is, um, we also as a community- Final point I want to make is, we also, as a community there, we had, received information, sort of hearsay from the developer, about what was occurring. So, we attended some of the meetings. Unfortunately, we've never received any notices from Planning Board or any other city organization as to what was going on. We were just trying to be informed citizens and getting out there. I assume that there was supposed to be some sort of certified letter sent out to neighboring residents. I could be wrong. Candace, you're shaking your head no.
There should be. I don't believe that there's anything on the books because I know Rolando and I have talked about putting forward that type of legislation. It's my understanding that unless it's historic, I, I mean, I wish, I would like for legal to correct me, but it's my understanding that they don't have to mail for redevelopment plan changes, although I think they should.
Right. So, it's just, it's basically, and the point being is the spirit behind this thing is, number one, let the community provide some input, whether it meets the, the actual letter of the law requirements, or also, you know, let the community vote on whether that this decision is a good decision. I mean, to provide the kind of input. So, we'll talk about more in a couple of weeks. But again, there's a lot of neighbors that are very heated about this topic, you know, quite frankly, and we'll have more discussions about it in a few weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Could I just ask a really quick question for Corporation Council? I mean, could somebody please investigate the, the easement issue? And like, we, that's, that's an important thing to understand. Would you like that?
Thank you.
Good evening, again. I'm here to talk about, first, I want to thank Councilman Rivera for his generous donation, and we were able to give some twenty-five families the food baskets for the third big grocery that we started recently. Second thing that I, that I have is, you know, like, I'm glad to see that you have a budget that gave, that finally gave us point four percent of tax decrease, which I don't think so. But if you get the actual county numbers, it might be even. But on the other hand, what I want to suggest to you is, at some point, you have to do an audit, a desk audit, because your salaries are very unfair. Some people who are just giving the campaign literature got fifty thousand dollars, sixty thousand dollar jobs. On the other hand, the people who are really working in the computer departments or IT department, they get paid thirty, forty thousand dollars. Those people have real skills. And somewhere, you have to make a balance. And if you look into those salaries, I, I'm sure you can cut two million dollars on that. And you have to look into the safety department. What have you got in ROI of spending around one point one million dollars? Has the crime gone down? Do we really need the department, right? We really need to get into that kind of a discussion going forward. And the more important thing that we have is the path train. It's a disaster for the last two days, and we thought they fixed it. And now indefinitely, we don't know what's going to happen. We definitely need an alternate system, like NY Waterway. They run the buses on the other side of New York City to all the cross streets. Maybe we should tell them to run the buses here also. That's a quick solution. And the second solution is, obviously, we need to look into a solution that is other than the path, right? Why can't we have a J City Waterway or some other waterway, NJ Waterway, right? That, that's very easy to have it. You know, you don't need to build any new infrastructure, and infrastructure is already there. I hope you will look into that. And this, this council should put a resolution and calm down, you know, this kind of behavior from Port Authority. Understand there is an issue over there, but this is ridiculous. You know, like, today, people got stuck. It's taking two, twelve hours for people to get back from New York City, right? I hope, you know, you understand. And you are bringing in fifty-six hundred more families in the forthcoming months and years. And new development, fifty-six hundred families will be here. And out of that, even if you assume that, you know, like, even one-third or, you know, like, a two-thirds go to New York City to walk, and we'll have a massive problem at hand. I hope you will address these issues in the forthcoming meetings and in the forthcoming agendas. And it has to be, the path is a serious issue, and it has to be looked into it. Thank you.
Kabili? Billy? Wake up.
You always said that, right?
Good afternoon, council. Good evening, really. I'm here based on a national concern that is facing all of us around the country. It's not a new concern in relationship to when we arrested, how we arrested, and how quick we, and I say we, the administration runs to attack the victim rather than get to what the issues are. I have the utmost confidence and faith in our Jersey City Police Department. But there's good and bad in everything. There's good lawyers, bad lawyers. There's good politicians, bad politicians. There are good doctors and bad doctors. There are good hospitals and bad hospitals. And a situation occurred at the Caribbean Festival that we need to look very closely at. Not because some of us know the family, not because the family is a church-going family, and not because the family is very involved in our community. But these incidents are going on all over our country. And we are too quick to run out and start talking about the victim and have very little to say about what's procedures carried out correctly and what's things done correctly. I want to applaud you, Councilman Bojiano, as a former police officer and Director Shea for intervening. But some of the comments I read in the newspaper were appalling as to how quick we could jump and start defending the police and at the same time, acting as though the victim was truly in the wrong. I encourage you to look a little closer at that matter, and not again because I don't have faith in our police department. Because as a former administrator, I've had to stand up and defend the greatness of our police department. And also, as a former administrator, I've had to address some wrongs in our police department, as well as the presidency and WACP. So, I came here tonight to say to you, not because I know this family, not because this family is a member of Monumental Baptist Church and is very active in this community, but we need to really look at this very closely and not take lightly that there was a typographical error. If the document said nine P.M., then what made the police rush there in a kind of a SWAT team mode? And so many of them be there to close down the festival? Why didn't they address the people in charge of the festival and get their cooperation in closing it down if that was necessary? As well as a lot of the other procedural questions. So, I beg of you, and I beg of the administration, let's back away from the comments that I saw in the newspaper, represented by Ms. Morel, and let's come as peace-loving people and as righteous people. That's all that I ask. As a citizen, we're faithful in you, faithful in our police department, and faithful in our administration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chang Tan? Joyce Willis?
Yes.
Oh, wait, you had a minute left.
Yes. On ten W, I think it is, I was aiming to say that. I'm very glad to see that there is some introduction. You know, I want to applaud all of you. I definitely want to applaud the Corporation Council. You know, and when I finish reading it...
Slap each other on the back.
No, it's not that. It's not that. Because this is a momentous thing for the administration, for the city council, and for us as a city. Thanks, Robert.
Billy. I thought you were sleeping.
Chang Tan? Mr. Tan left. Joyce Willis? That exhausted speaker, so those council members are going to get to business.
Sorry. I called two weeks ago and spoke, I mean, and asked to be put on the list for the night. That was before your, I'm Dr. Charles Curtis. That was before your September tenth meeting. And I called the general number, they passed me over to your office, and we have an issue...
You have a meeting on the tenth?
I didn't ask you...
And your name was on it?
I didn't...
It was on that agenda.
But that was a clerical error. I asked to speak on the twenty-third.
Sir.
Well, I mean, I asked to speak on the twenty-third. We have a serious issue on Belmont Avenue.
That's okay.
I sat through all of this. I sat through lawyers and everything else.
Your name was on the list last time.
I'm saying to you, I did not ask for my name to be put on September tenth. I asked for it to be placed on this night, September twenty-third.
Okay.
And I sat through this meeting because of that.
Make an exception, Robert.
Yeah.
You've got three minutes. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir.
That's rather cruel. I spoke, waited for everyone else. I'm here tonight because, I'm Dr. Charles Curtis. Charles, C-H-A-R-L-E-S. I'm here tonight, I'm former, I'm Vice President of Baptist Ministers Conference here in Hudson County. I'm a former Vice President of the Board of Education during the Koochie administration. And I'm a former committee person. I'm here tonight about an issue that, a fire that took place on Belmont Avenue on March twenty-seventh, two thousand thirteen. This was before you were elected. But today, well, we had debris that existed from March twenty-sixth, two thousand thirteen, through December twenty-sixth, two thousand thirteen. At that point, it was certainly on your watch. The debris was five feet high and went from the gate all the way to the basement window on twenty-seven Belmont Avenue where the fire started. Today, it took nine months before that debris was removed after calling the fire department, the building department, and calling the Mayor's Action Bureau, and later, the Resident Response Center. I'm certain that none of you would have allowed such debris to exist next to your home for nine months. People came from Masterplace, a young man. People were throwing dog waste, and nobody said that they were able to go on that property because they couldn't go beyond the gate. My attorney tells me you could have gotten a law, a judge's order, and you could have gone on that property. Today, that same property remains. There's charred glass in the front, charred glass in the back. Nothing has been done. The owner, Michelle Charles Hickman, and I'm told now the taxes are being paid by Wells Fargo. Nothing has been done to correct this. Belmont, the people of Belmont Avenue are good people. We try to keep our block up. I'm very indebted to Captain Hussey, who helped us get a couple of drug dealers off the block. But another member of the block is here. I own two homes, he owns two homes, and we work to keep our block up. I'm past President of the Block Association. And I'm just saying to you, we are very dissatisfied with the city's response. Animals have been in there, I'm talking about raccoons. We've had cats, and it's open for anybody. In fact, one day, we caught a lady sleeping in there. And so, with the weather changing, becoming cold, it's a possible fire hazard again. And we're asking you, since we call just about every division of the city, to do something about this. This is unconscionable. It certainly, I'm sure, again, you wouldn't allow it yourself. We pay taxes, we vote, and we deserve some sort of consideration. And so, I'll conclude with this. I will say to our councilwoman, our street, Summit Avenue, is an obstacle course. Downtown is being well taken care of. We've had, on Summit Avenue, twenty-five patches and some spots. And if you ever drive on Belmont Avenue from Bergen to the Boulevard, you will see how rough the street is. I know everybody takes care of downtown, but Bergen, Lafayette needs some tender, loving care, too. But I do hope you will do something about the fire. And sir, thank you. I sat through lawyers and everyone else. I'm a senior citizen here, and I pay taxes. I think I had a right to speak.
Good to be, sir.
Sir, where, where's the property between what on Belmont?
Oh, what's...
Where, where is it located physically between...
It's between Summit and...
And MLK Drive?
No, the, the school, that's a little block between...
MLK Drive?
What? No, no, not Prescott. On the block that number twelve was on.
Excuse me?
On the block that number twelve was. The block in the middle, before you get to Montgomery Street. Crescent, it's on Crescent.
It's in whatever.
Yeah, it's twenty-seven. And in fact...
Aid is over there to take the information because I've never heard of this situation.
The Jersey Journal did a front-page article on it.
And, but I'm talking about your problems and all this stuff, and I'm, so give information to my aide so that we can follow up. She's right there, sitting with the other gentleman.
Right there.
See, she's raising her hand for you right now, see?
All right.
Okay.
Back you two, sir.
Thank you.
Council members, let's allude to petitions and communications. Item six A will add Z-two as Horgan's, Mr. Horgan's submission and Mr. Riffin's submission to Z-three. Officers, Communications seven A through I. There are no reports to directors. To the claims in addendum number one, Councilperson Gudjuski.
Aye.
Ramcha?
Aye.
Bojiano? Bojiano? Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
LeVaro?
On the addendum, last page, I guess it's page ten, I'm abstaining, New Jersey City University. An aye on all the rest.
Okay, the balance of the claims were all paid unanimously, nine-zero. A was adopted earlier, K was withdrawn, so it's B through M. Councilperson Gudjuski?
Aye.
Ramcha?
Aye.
Bojiano?
Aye.
Osborne?
I had asked for an updated disclosure form for ten M. Did we get it? So, aye on everything except for M and no on M.
Councilperson Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Council President?
Just, guys, you're going to get the updated form on that? Please? She's absolutely right. Okay, so, I vote aye.
Okay.
Robert, can I have a quick question? The K, the ten K?
K was withdrawn.
Oh, K was withdrawn?
Yes. Eight-one, Councilperson Osborne voting no. The balance, nine-zero. N through V, Councilperson Gudjuski?
Aye.
Ramcha?
Aye.
Bojiano?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
LeVaro?
This is the balance?
No. N through V?
Aye.
Nine-zero. N through V, that now the balance. W through Z, no that Z-one was approved earlier. Councilperson Gudjuski?
Aye.
Ramcha?
Aye.
Bojiano?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
I want to say aye, but I want to first thank Kabili for bringing ten W to our attention concerning the disparity report. Okay, so I want you to know that we are doing something about it, okay? Thank you.
Stay on break next time.
I vote aye.
Council President?
Yeah, just on ten W, also acknowledge Kabili Tari for the, bringing that to the council's attention. And also, we're going to form a committee. And for anyone who is on the council, I believe, Councilperson Coleman, Osborne, who else expressed?
Rich, want to be on the committee?
And Rich Bojiano?
Yeah.
Want to be part of that committee?
Carlson, look at the...
Okay. Okay. I vote... Yeah. Coleman, Osborne, Bojiano will sit on the committee with members of the administration. Coleman, Osborne, Bojiano.
Okay.
And I vote aye.
Okay, unanimously.
Motion seconded.
Wait. Nine-zero. You have a motion by Councilperson Coleman,